Good evening, welcome to our November School Committee Meeting of the Northborough School Committee, open meeting. It is Monday, September, September, that would be nice, November 4th at 6:31 PM. I am calling the session in order. We have a remote participation tonight with Kristen and one member is unable to attend, Lauren, so we will be doing roll call votes for any votes that we need tonight. Did I miss anything? Okay, so we are going to open up the agenda with audience sharing. Does anybody have any audience sharing at this time? No? All right, moving on to new business. We have the principal reports, the elementary principals, and then they also are going to do school improvement plans, so I don't know however you guys want to do all, I want to just roll you all in together.
All right, good evening, I'm going to get us started. So the elementary schools, we have a lot of things that we're doing in common, so I'm going to read some of those and then we'll do some individual things for each of our schools for our monthly report. But on November 1st, we had an afternoon professional development on the Wellness Day, and the four elementary schools engaged in a day of learning focused on the theme of belonging. A specific emphasis was placed on working with the ways we can focus on cultivating a sense of belonging, and our teachers reflected on ways that students may lack a sense of belonging, and to build strategies to use explicit practices for strengthening it. And then we also had, over the last month, ST math professional development, and each of the elementary schools engaged in one-hour training with the ST math program, and staff used data to identify students not making the expected progress, and problem solve strategies to help them find success. Next week, we have parent-teacher conferences on November 12th and 14th. Families will have the opportunity to meet with their child's teacher in order to learn more about their progress. Conferences present an excellent opportunity for families to ask questions, share information, and set goals, and teachers are looking forward to partnering with families in order to support the academic, social, and emotional growth of each student. And then band and recorder informances are coming up, so we look forward to our fifth grade band students and our fourth grade recorder informants this month, and informants designed to share with the audience what students have learned in their band and recorder classes to date. And then safety continues to be a priority for us. As a part of October's Bus Safety Month, we conducted bus evacuation drills to review important rules and safety practices with our students. These drills are essential to ensure that everyone knows how to stay safe while riding the bus. Additionally, the elementary schools have invited the school resource officer Detective Sullivan in for safety chats and discussions. And then specifically at Z, this past Friday, we held our monthly Zebra families and community meeting. During morning meetings the past month, each class has completed their second step anti-bullying unit, and so we did an activity in our families about the power of words, and it reviewed the three Rs, recognize, report, and refuse during the whole school meeting, and we also had some fun dancing and singing about kindness.
At Peaslee, one thing I would like to highlight is our upper wing students attended a very successful ed camp on October 11. This personalized and authentic learning experience provided students in grades three through five the opportunity to select from a wide variety of outstanding and highly engaging learning opportunities. The 31 presentations offered by teachers, parents, and various community members made the event a huge success. Thank you to all the presenters, as well as Mrs. Donay, grade five, Mrs. Griffin, grade four, for organizing and leading the event. The feedback from students and staffs about this special event was very positive.
At Lincoln Street School, we had our first school-wide assembly on October 25th. We called it "The Kindness in the Cave" as a way to culminate the last SEL unit on anti-bullying. We had Ms. Maggie Ibrahim, the new Director of Equity and Belonging, be part of our guest speaker at our assembly. We also, on the 24th, we invited some families in to discuss the celebration of Diwali. That was just some feedback and insight that we learned through our conversations at a coffee talk that we had a few days earlier. And lastly, the fifth graders on October 31st participated in some community engagement by walking to the Whitney Place to spread some kindness and cheer. This partnership is an event that the Lincoln Street School has done for many, many years, and we were happy to bring it back this year. Friday, we will have our Veterans Day Assembly, which will begin at 9:15, and LSS family members and who have served in the armed forces are invited to come and attend. The Picard Post will also be there as we honor those who have served in our country.
And at Proctor School, we held our first Penguin Huddle in October, which is an all-school assembly that we plan to have monthly, and it focuses on a shared theme. The October theme was bullying prevention, similar to the other schools where we just completed, all sixth grades just completed, the bullying prevention program through second step. And so we did that with our first huddle, where our PTO-sponsored or BMX bikers perfection on wheels that send the message about bullying prevention. It was just a nice way to reinforce the lessons that we did in our second step unit. And our next Penguin Huddle is scheduled for late November with a focus on kindness and gratitude. Our fifth graders are going to be leading that huddle, and they're calling it "The Attitude of Gratitude."
And then for Melican, their PTO organized and ran the Roadrunner Ultimate Challenge on October 18th. Students had a blast working through various obstacles, and the PTO raised over $14,000. The PTO is also organizing a grade six bake sale for tomorrow to help defray the cost for the overnight field trip in May. And then they also have a fun night for sixth graders scheduled for November 22nd from 6 to 8. The Yonder Pouch implementation is going well, and they've noticed a significant difference in students' willingness to socialize with peers and their ability to focus. The eighth graders were treated to an annual presentation from the Assavet Valley, Assavet Vocational Technical High School, and later will have an opportunity to visit, and later had the opportunity to visit the school if they chose to, and they're working with Algonquin to schedule a visit there as well. And then their first peer leader training for Changemakers for Good was held today. For the past three years, student leaders from Melican, Trotter, and Algonquin have participated in a World of Differences program, receiving training to lead workshops focused on bias, equity, and belonging for their peers. This school year, they're excited to announce an updated peer mentoring initiative called Changemakers for Good, a program that offers specialized training for both program advisors and peer leaders in grades seven through 12. Trained peer leaders will continue to facilitate workshops aimed at fostering respectful discussions amongst their peers, promoting a deeper understanding of identity, bullying, cyberbullying, and bias within the community. And then school picture makeups are scheduled for Wednesday, and school musical parent information night is this Thursday at 6 o'clock, and thank you to all the coaches, student athletes, and caregivers for a wonderful fall sports season.
Thank you so much for all your presentations and all the exciting information that's going on at all your schools. I wish I went to school now.
There's a lot going on.
You know what I mean? Like, there's just so much fun stuff that you hear, but even when my kids were there, it was always fun. I don't know if that one was a kid. It was boring. I didn't like school. This is fun.
Now you like it.
Now I like it.
Now you like it.
Now I can't get rid of it. Thank you so much. Unless there's, okay.
I've got several questions. First of all, John, you talked about the conferences for the families. The first one here is November. Is there a schedule where we have like a midpoint or a final one, or how does that work after, is all the parents invited to the one in November?
All the parents are invited in November, and we have pretty high, at elementary level, really pretty high participation rates in any families that aren't able to attend on those two days. The teachers work with to at least make a contact, whether it's over the phone or a separate in-person time. But we try to make sure that we connect with each family at this November check-in, and then we have another one in March where it's just a one-day conference, so they're shorter conferences, but we still try to meet with every family then.
So every family is invited to participate in the March one?
Yep.
I know it's hard for the teachers to do, to spend another night or afternoon, and I'm very pleased to see, and our teachers are very dedicated, is to also fit in the parents where you may have two parents that are working that can't come in a day, where there's an illness with the child or themselves. So, thank you, please go back to the teachers and thank them for all their dedication. It's hard, but it's very worthwhile communication between the teachers and the parents and the kids, so thank you. Mary, you talked about the ed camp, and I was, yeah, I'm like Kelly, I want to come. Okay, what was ed camp, and did the kids sign up? Was this something like you would have a learning stations?
Yes.
So they, okay.
So it started, ed camp is a professional development opportunity for teachers, and so teachers would go and select from a variety of things. So we brought it to Peaslee, so kids will choose from 31, they pick their top priorities, so they might list one through four. And then we try to give them at least one of those. Most of the time, everybody got two of theirs, maybe not their top. And then there were things like crime scene detectives, where Officer Stephen Sullivan came. That was actually co-facilitated by a fifth grader. And then we had things like sports, volleyball, we had flag football, Officer Griffin came to do that one. We had DNA of a strawberry, so a whole gamut of all fields. I think the experience-based learning is the really, the takeaway, because kids just love being in a small group, because we divided all those kids up to 31 classes, so maybe five or six kids at a time. And so it was, it was really interesting just to see the variety. And the kids watching the things they choose, when they can, we had kids doing sewing, male, female, everybody doing a whole variety of things.
That's wonderful. How many hours did that take? They always said an afternoon, or how many days?
It was one afternoon.
Okay. And I'm sure the kids said they didn't realize that they were learning.
Right.
They didn't realize they were learning. Plus, they got to select what they wanted to do.
Exactly.
Okay, so it was self-centered, based on them. Through the superintendent, if you do this again next year, or anybody does, could we be invited?
Sure.
Okay, Kelly and I, we'll, and we'll all come, because I think it'd be wonderful to see the kids and enthusiasm on their faces.
Yes.
It'd be wonderful. Jennifer, you talked about the Diwali, and I think it's wonderful that we introduce all these different holidays, celebrations, and, and what is happening in the homes, just so the kids know, because we're all multicultural right now, and they may be invited to a friend's home, and now they'll be able to be aware of what's really going. So I was very pleased to hear that. And the other thing was the Whitney Place visit. Being a caregiver for my parents, I know that anytime a kid would come to the door, you know, in my house, boy, big smiles came on their faces for someone to even just to talk to. So I can imagine you brought a lot of sunshine to those people at Whitney Place, so thank you very much. And it was nice to get the kids out and go take a little walk.
Yeah, the walk was, the walking field trip is a great investment, because there is no investment.
It is, it doesn't cost anything. Just shoe leather.
I had my safety vest on and my stop sign, and we walked, and four teachers were with us, and you're, you're spot on, Joan. The faces, they gave away little pencils and pads and little spider rings, it was, it was just great. I'm so glad we brought that back.
Oh, it was. Especially in, not just the sunshine when you were there, that continues on for them, you know, so, in so many ways. Did you have any problem, I know that Kristen may ask, did you have any problem crossing the street here?
We didn't. We walked all the way down to the crosswalk between 20 and Lincoln Street. I got in the middle of the road, they crossed, and...
Did you have the police helping you?
Oh, no.
Oh.
I, I think I'm, you know, I feel like I'm the chief of safety, so I, I had, I had my sign.
Did you not know that, what she used to do at Melican?
I did.
No. Oh, I saw you at Election Day. You handled that very well on voting day.
I take it very seriously, I felt very safe.
That is applicable in other areas.
Yeah, so it's great.
You had your training, right?
Yes.
Well, thank you, and you got everybody there safely and back.
We did, we did.
And then Jennifer...
Except for that one known.
And then Jennifer, also, you talked about the veterans, and you're going to have a program?
So Friday morning, our music teacher, Katrina Wayland, and Lee King, for years have been organizing a Veterans Day program, and each grade sings a song, you know, to remember and honor the veterans. We invite in the Picard Post, but what has been a special tradition is that our own students invite family members, neighbors, aunts, uncles, cousins, anyone who has served, and they become, you know, kind of a center of attention, and we get a chance to honor them. So it's been a nice tradition.
So that's this Friday?
That's this Friday at 9:15, you are welcome to attend.
Okay, and if any veteran may be watching this, you know, because there's nothing exciting else happening, you know, for the next 24 hours, so if they're watching this meeting, could they come over to attend?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Okay, and Greg will know, as the liaison, I always tell him, I always ask Greg, don't tell, I ask Greg to always extend invitations to the senior citizens, so, and as liaison to the senior citizens and the Council of Aging, is there any way that through Greg's office, that you could get an invitation to the Senior Citizen Center in Northborough, and just if somebody could announce it, would that be possible?
Absolutely, we have a formal invitation, I can send that over to Greg.
Okay, if that could go to them, because I think there's a lot of people, there's a Doll Man's group that I found out about, and they're very active, and they're funny, as Greg will attest, because they had a tour of the athletic complex.
They had a car in the Southborough Parade.
They did?
Uh-huh. You know how we have Applefest, they have their Heritage Day Parade, they had a, they had a car.
Yeah, when I first heard about this group, I thought it was D-O-L-M-A-N, and I'm researching Doll Man group, you know what I mean, but it's a D-U-L-L. Doll Man. Because they're doll, right? They're not doll by any means, but they're a great group, so if you could extend an invitation, that'd be great.
That sounds great.
Thank you.
No problem.
Wonderful reporting, guys, thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on to school improvement plan?
Wait for it.
No?
Yes.
Are we doing that?
No.
You don't want to ask?
I'm going to follow. So I'm, I will kick off this presentation, and as we have learned to grow and get to know each other as the elementary school principals, we are going to put forth this new school improvement plan for 2024, 2027. The school improvement plan is a dynamic document that is grounded in our district's vision of educate, inspire, and challenge. Our collaborative process is authoring this school improvement plan is our best thinking, and it really truly focuses on four main goals, which we will highlight later on in the presentation. As principals, we will highlight not only our goals, but also our schools, and share their stories with you this evening. Furthermore, this document represents actionable and attainable goals and steps to support the whole child, meet the needs of our diverse and changing population, provide opportunities for students as well as staff to elevate their skill set, and to do this in a safe and welcoming environment that is rooted in kindness, respect, and belonging. So we are going to share this presentation with you. Next slide, please.
All right, so it all comes back to Vision 2026, which is the District Strategic Plan. In the portrait of a graduate, we have these components that we are working towards to have, when they graduate from Algonquin, that they are critical thinkers and collaborators and healthy and balanced, growth-oriented, socially and critically engaging, and communicators. And at the elementary level, we're kind of laying the foundation for the, to get to that point, and if they're going to reach that fullest potential, we have to do a nice job preparing them at the elementary level. And so we use the District Strategic Plan, and then as the four elementary schools, we look at how does that, where does that fit into what we're doing as a school? And so our goals, you'll see, are aligned to this, and Keith, you can go ahead to the next one. And so there are the five strategic objectives, and our goals focus on empowering learners, healthy and balanced, and equity of opportunity. Those are the ones where the work that we're doing on a day-to-day basis, that our teachers are doing every day, really hone into how we can make an impact in getting the kids where we want them to be as they graduate. And so those are the, we'll go over those here in a second, but that's, those are the three areas that we're going to focus on tonight.
We thought it would be interesting to begin as we tell our stories, just to show you a little bit of history of the story of the elementary schools. And on this slide, we have some data around the, inside the walls of Northborough Elementary Schools, then and now, and so it's a nice breakdown of our enrollment by race and ethnicity. I got a little crazy with this, and if you clicked on the then, I actually even went back 10 more years. There's very few people in this room that have been in the district that long, and I think that's Keith, even though he was over at Southborough for some time. And I think you and I, my friend, Joanne, like, I think it's just, we, Joan and I have been doing this a long time, so it is just nice to see the numbers, and if you can just take, you know, a look at them, and how our population, African-American population has tripled, our Asian students, our Hispanic, all of our diverse learners, it has grown over time, and so that is, is a talking point, but we want to speak to that as well this And then the next slide is just the evolution of our enrollment, and again, that slide on the DES, that actually can only go back to 2006. What I learned, there was categories and groups that weren't even included back in 2003 and 2004, but again, this just shows our enrollment, and it, it highlights all of our students, but also our high-need students, our EL students, and if you look through the columns, you see how it has grown, and that, that is a big driver of our work together in how we can put forth a school improvement plan that meets the needs of all learners.
So because our school improvement plan does look pretty similar between all four Northborough Elementary Schools, what we wanted to do is just sort of highlight each individual school, so each of us has a slide that we're calling "Our School at a Glance", which just gives some more details about our school as an individual. So Proctor Penguins, "At a Glance", currently we have a total enrollment of 251 students. We have 18 multilingual learners and eight former, former, it's so late, it's 9:00 PM. Former English language learners. And then just as far as our students with disabilities, because as Jen highlighted, some of our sub, subgroups, as far as the population goes, we do have 49 students with disabilities, and one of the really awesome things about Proctor School is we have an upper wing and a lower wing Castle Program. Each classroom has five students, and we are a pretty diverse population. We have about 40% of our student enrollment speaks another language at home as well, so it really makes Proctor pretty special.
All right, so the Z Zebras, we have 253 students total, so similar to Proctor. We have 55 students that are identified with disabilities, and then we have 16 multilingual learners and 12 former multilingual learners. And we also have a language-based classroom at Z, and right currently, we have two students in that program. And there's some fun pictures of our school community. I think one thing that Z really prides itself in is the, the family atmosphere. The top-right picture there is a selfie of our, of one of our Zebra families, and I think that's something that is special about our school that the staff and the students love.
I had to adjust this slide this afternoon because I have two new students that came to Lincoln Street today. So we're 276, I think the largest of the elementaries. We have a therapeutic learning program, which makes us very special and unique as we kind of define our schools and tell that story. That is also a program that some of the members that attend that program are from Southborough, so that makes it extra special. Our numbers for students with disabilities is 50. We have currently 17 multilingual learners and nine fell students. Again, the pictures are just a representation, a smattering of activities that we have done this year already, and if you can, you know, look into it, we are really trying to support the theme of belonging and kindness and welcoming here at the school.
And last but not least, the Peaslee Pandas. At Peaslee School, we have 271 students, we have 59 special education students, we also have a Castle Program with six students. Our multilingual learners are 22, and our former English learners are four. I selected the pictures here to give you a wide variety of what it means to be a Peaslee Panda. The first one on the bottom left is one of our all-school meetings where we meet monthly, and we talk about our contributions to the community, as well as our individual accomplishments and strengths. We highlight a lot of students who are outstanding in several different areas. We also work on our core values. As you move across, at the bottom, we have a group of girls who are there showing their Peaslee spirit. They also happen to be fundraising for a buddy bench at our school. We often have kids who will propose ideas, and we try to help them bring it to fruition. So that has been going really well, they're really interested in trying to give back and, and develop a way for kids to reach out to others by sitting on the bench when they need a friend. On the bottom right, this just signifies our creativity and our willingness to do a lot of hands-on activities and make learning fun for students. A picture paints a thousand words, and this is the best part of, of the presentation, is just seeing the joy on, on children's faces, and this work is really complex, and just putting it, kind of reminding everybody that it's not easy, but we do it for these little ones, and they are all happy and functioning and looking forward to coming to school each day. On the top left, you'll see a Venn diagram, it's one of our big buddy activities where we have upper wing, older students partner with lower wing, younger students, and that is where they are finding their common, their common aspects of their personalities, and then the two individual on the outer of the Venn diagram. Our participation in the Applefest Parade, we have a, we have a thriving community of parents and families who often make our events. The top is just our willingness to work as a staff and collaborate, put our heads together to make it a really great school experience, and then just below it, we do put a lot of time into developing our fifth graders and their leadership skills. Here, they're helping out with computer classes in kindergarten, and really loving giving back to the community. Next slide. So the next part of our presentation is really to dig into our strategic objectives and our school initiatives. So as John pointed out, we have three that we're working on, empowering student learners, equity of opportunity, and healthy and balanced learners. In Empowering Learners, we implement instructional practices that engage students in developing and demonstrating their knowledge and skills through rigorous, innovative, and relevant learning experiences. In our Equity of Opportunity strategic objective, we provide all students access to challenging and culturally responsive learning experiences that meet their individual needs. And finally, in Healthy and Balanced Learners, our prioritized social, emotional, and physical well-being of students. As we go over the next few slides, we'll highlight the strategic initiative goals. So the first one up, and you can forward the, is Empowering Learners. So the two goals under Empowering Learners are, one, to identify and implement high-quality instructional resources, new curricula, and practice, practices that engage all learners with a high degree of fidelity. The second one is to develop, implement, and refine those practices for engaging educators in collaborative learning communities to examine data effectively and to establish protocols that support them in utilizing data for the continuous improvement of teaching and learning for all students. So on each slide, in the, the next two goals, we'll lay out some action steps. Although it's comprehensive, these are just some of the highlights under the Empowering Learners goal. So we are currently in year two for our ELA curriculum and our ST math implementation. So within the, the Witten Wisdom curriculum, we have been working on incorporating writing components, including our Common Assessments. In year two of our math, ST math program, we have been working through an updated dashboard that will focus on increasing engagement, and, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Fourth and fifth grade spelling and phonics resources are newly implemented. phonics resources are newly implemented. We have early adopters, which is a piloted group, it's a group of teachers who are piloting our Eureka Math Program. And so what we have found is a great way to kind of preview the materials before we do a full adoption. And what it allows us to do is really to work out some kinks, to figure out where maybe professional development is needed, material supplies, giving the adopters some leadership opportunities so that they can work and communicate with the teachers who will be implementing it for next year. Included in that will be some spring training in preparation of the implementation of that new curriculum. We also continue to build in our Universal Design for Learning practices into our curriculum across the content areas, as well as our high-quality instructional practices. We find that those two, although they're listed separately, have a lot of places where they dovetail with one another. We are newly implementing our Analytic View, which is a data dashboard. And what that has allowed us to do is really dive into where our students are finding success, where they might have some weaknesses, and then to be able to, during the PLC, weekly and monthly meetings, are able to have that at our fingertips so that everybody can look at the data. We have been developing some protocols, as well as some literacy skills with our staff about how to look at data. We also are focusing in on not looking at data for the pure sense of looking at the data, but to also ask questions, like what do we want to learn about our students from the data? It's very easy to isolate data for data's sake, but when you focus on should students learn and be able to do, it narrows your question. So we've been, since day one of school, we've been utilizing those programs to help teachers refine their practices and develop their strategies with students. Finally, at the very end, all of these initiatives have had opportunities for professional development and focus, with the focus on the successful implementation with our students. Like I said, it's a very complex work. And the next goal.
And as you will notice, as we go through the four goals, that there is a very common thread that ties it all together. Goal three is the equity of opportunity, and that's to maintain and enhance inclusive classroom communities and school environments characterized by equitable access to learning for every student, regardless of background or ability, and strive to address their diverse individual needs effectively. Some of the action steps that we have put into place this year in moving forward is just resource sharing, that value as four unique individual schools coming together and sharing resources. That does help us with our reflection. And also the academic engagement that promotes diversity. We are trying to keep always at the forefront the concept of windows and mirrors. Again, and throughout our curricula, we are focusing on the theme of belonging, whether it's in our specials or our classroom teachers. That is something that is steadfast and we would like to continue that throughout the years. Development of learning communities and families that promote belonging and connectivity. I think each of our schools does something a little bit different, but all are promoting that connectivity that is needed, whether it's through the family meetings or the huddles. We are all trying to promote this. And this is something that has been very much supported by our staff members. District-wide and school-based workshops to support conversations around race, diversity, and discrimination using shared language. There's been many opportunities for this already this year. One that I'd like to highlight is in our own, as our own resource, is some experts, I'd like to call them, from Algonquin have been putting on professional development in the morning and in, or in the afternoon. You can choose for staff, not only staff and also administrators, to talk about some tough topics that may be hard for us to address and just have us collaborate and work together in finding the right language and doing this work together because it is hard work. That has been so beneficial. We have all attended the administrators, but our staff members have also attended. So that's just a nice way to use the strengths you have already existing in the district in a very powerful way. Incorporating skills and knowledge learned from professional development opportunities such as restorative circles, trauma-informed education, and Universal Design for Learning. Tomorrow, we have that great opportunity. That is a professional development day for our staff and all of us. All of the principals will be attending different professional learning opportunities, including those items, those things that I just mentioned are part of the many vast choices that staff had for professional learning. Continue to inventory our school libraries and classroom libraries. That is something that our staffs in all of our buildings are trying to have culturally diverse texts that students can look in the text and see themselves in the characters and the storyline. I think that has been a collaborative effort by all of our librarians meeting during department time and also PLC time. Tier one SEL, we continue with the Second Step program. It focuses on that growth mindset, acceptance, and core values of each school. So that's something that I think that each one of us echoed in our opening slides about the uniqueness of our school, but also in our principal reports. We all referred to the importance of the Second Step units and how we have highlighted them already this year. And then lastly, the community forums and coffee hour, any opportunity that we can bring families in through conversations and inviting them in at different times, not just the morning. We want to try to get as many families into our schools, to be a part of our school, to share their learning and their cultures and their experience with us. And I think that collaboration is only going to help promote growth for all of us.
All right. Our final goal is under the district strategic objective of healthy and balanced learners. As we know, that is an objective that does aim to prioritize the social, emotional, and physical well-being of all of our students, as well as all of our community members. So that goal is specific to creating and utilizing structured opportunities for integrating health and wellness consistently within and across all educational settings and throughout our students' day on a daily basis. Some of the ways that that, how that looks or how it looks in action in our buildings are, as we talked about many times this evening, our Second Step, Universal Social, Emotional Learning Curriculum. That is that prescribed curriculum that many of our teachers or all of our teachers use, especially during morning meetings, at least weekly, to be able to support our learners in understanding the Castle competencies as it relates to social, emotional learning. So some of those areas of focus are around self-management, emotional regulation, building relationships. So that is a huge focus. And then following up with that, as we mentioned a little bit around restorative practices, while we don't have a specific curriculum around that, we do tend to use some restorative practices as a framework for having conversations with one another and conflict resolution. So what that looks like is just sort of a brief overview of restorative practices is more about a focus on repairing any harm that's caused versus a focus on breaking a rule, for example. So it does make it a little bit more personal and allows us to have a nice approach of building relationships as we sort out conflicts that might arise. Another aspect of this goal in action in our buildings is looking at data, as we talked about, through Analytic View, our data dashboard that we're using this year. We use the SABERS data. That's a universal screener for our social, emotional learning. And the way that looks is our teachers, typically it happens three-quarters of the beginning of the school year. That's how we've used it in years past. But what the teachers do is they fill out, there's specific questions that they have that they fill out for each individual student, and it allows us to get a sense of the needs of that student. And what it does is also informs any potential tier-two interventions as we work with students who might need some skill building in emotional regulation, for example, or self-management. So we do use those tools for that data analysis. Another way that we, as all four elementary schools, look to continue to structure methods for wellness and mental health and emotional well-being is our community events. We really enjoy making sure that, again, tying into the theme of belonging, that we all feel valued and respected in our buildings and in our learning communities. So some examples of those events are exactly what we have been talking about, like the Fun Run or Whitney Place, and doing a lot of engagement within the communities to continue to build that connection with one another. Our families and other community members do have a major role in this as well. So we have school councils that we meet with regularly with our parents, and that helps inform some of the work that we're doing. Specifically, in the Proctor School Council, we recently talked about how we can continue to hear the voices of families as it relates to belonging to ensure that all of our families feel that they can collaborate in their child's education and with their child's school. One of the initiatives that's being worked on this year is looking at health and phys ed standards. And so that's something that Mary Ellen Duggan is going to be doing this school year and working with our, all of our health teachers and a committee to look at how we can really align horizontally and also vertically some of the work that we're doing. Just as far as in elementary schools, we do have buddy classes. So for example, our, you know, fifth graders might be paired up with our second graders. And when we have fun school events or community events, we do like to pair some of those classes together because it's always really fun for our lower wing students to kind of partner with our upper wing students. They tend to be really nice role models and there's so many characteristics and qualities that come out for both the littles and the older ones during those times together, which is really nice. Obviously, we have our wellness days this year. That's something that we're continuing to refine as the school year goes along, but really making sure that we're providing opportunities for all of our students, their families, but also our teachers, to engage in activities around social, emotional well-being. We also talked a little bit about the safety chats that we have in our buildings and what that looks like is maybe slightly different in each of our buildings, but it's really making sure that our physical safety, our students are aware of how we keep ourselves healthy and safe on a daily basis. So just kind of normalizing some of that language, talking about how we can support ourselves and one another. We talked a little bit about the Fun Run and mindful moments, just making sure we are being mindful and being intentional about being present and in the moment. And we think overall that these are some, but not all, of the action steps that our schools are taking to ensure the physical and emotional well-being of our students. Next slide. All right. So that is it for our Northborough Elementary School Improvement Plan. We hope that you have some takeaways from the work that each of our buildings are doing this year. And we look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Joan, do you want to start?
Sure. I love education. I'm not putting anybody on the spot. I want to learn at the same time. What I was impressed about, well, first of all, this is going 2024 to 2027, correct?
Correct.
And this is the same plan in all four schools, correct? Which is different when we used to have every school do something different, which I am very pleased with collaboration and cooperation between you. Do you have, do you foresee time where you're going to be able, at the end of this year, look at it and say, we've got to tweak this, we've got to tweak that? Do you have enough time? Teachers never have enough time to collaborate and talk with each other. Do you envision getting together and tweaking this in any way possible?
So that was, so I guess so. So, sorry. That was our, our school improvement plan is the three-year plan. One thing that we may have missed was those were the 24, 25 action steps. So basically, what we're going to do at the end of this year is review, and I think that's part of our school improvement plan, is to really take inventory of what we were able to do. One of the things that is really nice is when we do all of this work together, we do this pre-planning, but then we live it and we identify, there are certain things, initiatives, that we end up doing organically throughout the year that we may not have planned for. So we want to be able to account for that as well. So at the end of the school year, we're able to put those in and make any changes as needed for the 25, 26 layer.
Okay. So Greg, would they, would the principals be coming back next year with an update or?
Yes, next fall, they'll provide an update on the 24, 25 progress of the goals they presented this evening.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that's what makes it such a dynamic document, Joan.
Oh, I think it's wonderful.
Is that, that reflection, we get together often anyway as a group, but the takeaways that we learn from year to year, and we put that into our action steps or adjustments for the following year.
I think it's exciting because sometimes I know writing a reading curriculum and then you get it bound and you get it spiral-bound, and then you may put it on the shelf and then, oh, maybe we'll take it out in two years or something, take a look at it. But I love this collaboration, Greg, that you're allowing the teachers to do and the principals to update this as you go through. And all working together is great because you learn, as kids learn from each other, as you were saying, you know, in, what was that, the Ed Camp. Okay, the kids were learning from each other. Same thing is with the high excellence that we have of the principals. So thank you very much. One of the slides, I think Jennifer, you had it, which was looking at the comparison in 10 years of the students, the high needs. Going back 10 years ago is 26, and now is 51. Am I correct in saying that we're identifying, which we should be doing, are we, are you, not me, are you identifying students sooner, which is the positive? I mean, somebody may say, whoa, why are we going, why did it double? But I think that through the screening that we do at the preschool, is that the reason why the higher numbers?
That's definitely one thing that definitely contributes to it. I think that we have different tools, right, from 10 years ago that we can identify children that may have higher needs. The preschool is one aspect, but also we have DIBIL screening, we have math assessment screenings. And so there's just opportunities. We have, I think, in 10 years' time, definitely that our support staff has grown. So we have different liaisons in each of our buildings. I don't know if anyone else has to add to that, but...
I was just going to say, also, I do think the needs have shifted of our kids also. I think the needs are growing each year. And I think if you look what our schools looked at 10 years ago, what they look like now, the needs are just different than what they were. And I think we have worked to shift and evolve and adjust that. And you see that with some of the hiring recommendations we make and things like that. But there has been a shift in the needs that our kids have.
Okay. And I know at the combined meeting that we had in September, the president and chairperson of the NSPAC made a presentation and showed different numbers. And it was enlightening to see that as the kids progress from, let's take preschool, kindergarten up, and then you look at the numbers at Algonquin, if I'm remembering correctly, they're lower, okay? And someone would say, well, wait. And I'm like, that's the best thing. That is the best progress you want to see. Because if you can identify those students earlier, then we can help them to their best, not catch them when they're in fifth grade or sixth grade. Catch them at the early steps of their education. So, you know, in other words, I'm not alarmed at that 51. I'm glad you have 51 because I think that we're helping those students. And I think the parents and the taxpayers would be very happy who are identifying. And you guys are really doing your job on that. On, since you're on your second year, Mary, you talked about the second year in Witten Wisdom and ST math. What are you hearing from the teachers and the feedback? Like, let's say, let's take a third grade class last year. That was their first time in it. What are the fourth grade teachers or any combination like that? What are the fourth grade teachers or, or any combination like that? Are they saying the kids are coming, they've learned those strategies, they've learned those skills, they're ready to start better than they were last year in, in September?
So, I think a combination of a couple of things. The first thing, they've been through the curriculum before, so they know where it's going and to trust that it's going in a way that will work for students. Um, I also think kids know what to expect because the, the framework, the shell of the, the class, what you do first, second, third, how you look at um different topics using different titles, but also just the different components of the E.L.A. curriculum. Um, and then I also think that teachers are, have more insight to pacing. So, there's, there's a flow to the lessons, there's some decision-making, there is adjustments based on the kids in front of them. Um, and I think all of those things have made for um greater confidence, both in themselves as well as what their students can do. Um, so, yes, I think it's, it's going very well.
Okay, that's good to hear that.
What's new is the writing component. So, that's, you know, that's where they're now putting a lot of their effort, their planning. Um, they often use their planning periods to do that, just to make sure that they're doing what, um, what's expected.
Okay, thanks a lot. Jennifer, I hate to come back to you again, but I have you on the spot. You talked about the slide on the strategic objective equity of opportunity. And that, I, there's two things that I'm not familiar with, and it was like the fifth bullet. It was talking about trauma-informed education and another one was restorative circles. Can you explain to me what those two are?
Sure, so, trauma-informed education, i- it's not new, but it is something that we are, as schools, are trying to learn as much as we can about. So, as we learn as professionals, we want our staff to also learn. And trauma has a wide range. This could be um students that are coming to us um from divorced families. There could be some socioeconomic, uh, low, low income. It could be homelessness. It could be any kind of mental health, i- it could be abuse. So, when our students come to us with some of those, a back, some of that type of background, it makes the most sense that we can support our staff and each other by being more informed about how to address the needs and meet that student where they are. Um, for example, um, we want to avoid any type of triggers. So, if there is some type, a, a book in our library or in a classroom setting that may cause some sort of trigger, we will be more informed that we may go and use a different choice or a different model for that particular lesson. Does that help?
Yeah, no, that really does. Because I always think of trauma as being physical, but this is more, it could be social, it could be mental. You know, it could be even a home setting. And what is restorative circles?
So, I know Stacy spoke a little bit about, about that, but um I think we can both talk about this. That's something that we, um, we brought a little bit to the elementary level because it's restorative practices are something we both did as middle school assistant principals. So, uh, part of the restorative practice piece is that we want to give students an opportunity to repair and fix their work. And so, restorative, it, we, we try to educate the students about maybe bad decisions or a decision they make um that is impacting other, other kids, and we give them an opportunity to repair it and be accountable for it. Restorative circles aren't actually just for students, it could be with your staff. We could sit as a staff and have a restorative circle just around um something that people are, have different um opinions on. So, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Sure. I think one of the reasons why a lot of districts end up moving toward restorative practices is because it does end up promoting equity amongst our students. So, for example, if you think about typical disciplinary concerns, um, sometimes you would see, if you crunch the data, that there are certain students, like you might see more males having um more disciplinary issues, or you might see students with disabilities or from different subgroups that, or more marginalized populations potentially. And when you use a restorative approach, it ends up um leveling the playing field a little bit. So, as to not have a behavioral approach to behavior and discipline, but more about, as Jen was sharing, uh, identifying the harm that was caused and working on repairing the relationship piece versus this is a rule that we broke and now you have to fix it.
Yeah, I, when I saw the word circles, I was thinking of morning circles. You know, the, I see morning circles that they do and everybody participates. I'm like, okay, what's restorative? So, it, it, it's only, you only apply this when it's needed.
So, it can be both. So, you can do community circles that are very similar to the morning circles, Joan, that you're referring to. Um, we do have some teachers that incorporate a circle, like a structured circle during morning meeting. Uh, what that looks like is usually there's a theme for the circle, there's a talking piece and there's somebody who facilitates the circle and then, um, and they can sort of talk whenever. So, typically, it's an adult if we're with students. And then, um, the students will have to pass the talking piece to one another when it's their turn to talk. And so, sometimes it's just about community building, um, which is usually when, how we want to introduce restorative practices, when it's not like a response to uh harm or concern. And then you have the, so that's like kind of the proactive setting the stage piece. And then anytime there is a conflict, you can do more of that responsive, restorative circle to speak specifically about a, a particular situation.
So, how often, excuse me, how often would you be using the restorative practices, would you say?
Daily.
Daily? Daily?
Anytime we have a kid in the office, anytime there's a conflict at a recess that teachers are working with the students on, I think it's a, it's more of a culture than it is like an act, like a single action. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And there are.
There's a lot of conflict in elementary schools.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
There's a lot of kids and.
Well, no, I'm just saying that is a fact, not a judgment.
Our goal is for when kids make a mistake or don't do things the way that they, they probably should have, like for them to learn and grow from it, and this is a way to help them do that. So, I think that's a big part of our job is helping kids like grow into those young adults that they're turning into.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not always so complex to the point of ingraining in the culture. It is often just a, um, uh, a way to make a quick amends, just a, by recognition of an error or a recognition of a harm without it needing to really do much more than, than just be acknowledged.
Okay, so for example.
Yeah, no, you're, hold on.
If we were to see a student, I'm just going to give an example of like a student who um tossed up fidget, right? And somehow the teacher wanted to have a restorative conversation with that student. There are sort of prescribed questions that they would ask. So, for example, what happened? What were you thinking at the time? Um, what harm was caused or who was harmed, right? And so, what that does is allow the student to say, well, I guess it was disruptive to the class, to the teacher, I'm thinking about the other students in the class as well, it may not have been super safe, you know, or maybe they're a little bit afraid. Then we think about um what we can do differently, how do we repair? And what have we thought about since? So, those are some questions or some examples of questions that you might ask. So, it's not like, well, you're not allowed to throw something and so now I just have to apologize. It's more about how we learn and grow and process.
Okay, so, i- it allows the student to be more reflective of their behavior, what they did. And you want them to improve their behavior instead of the teacher saying, okay, Sammy, down to the principal's office, you tell them what you just did, okay? Without the child having a time to be reflective on it, that's really good, okay?
Yeah, it's the reflection piece, Joan, as well as that accountability, ownership piece. I think however we can support kids kind of owning their mistake and coming clean on it. It's, it's good to start young.
Now, I can, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and to your point, it also supports more inclusion practices versus exclusionary or traditional exclusionary disciplinary practices.
Oh, now that's, and now I can see how I, daily.
Daily.
Once a month or something like that, you know? Well, in, in conclusion, I'd just say bravo. I love the collaboration that you said with the A.R.H.S. staff, that's wonderful. We're always, you know, one district, thirteen schools, the whole motto. But you're using the strengths of the, of the colleagues and it's wonderful. It really is, and you learn and you never know when somebody wants to get, uh, go to another masters and go up to the high school and teach there, though we don't want anybody leaving. Um, but we're all one district, so bravo to all of you. Thank you for answering my questions. I learned something tonight. I learned a lot, so thank you.
Good. A lot of good, a lot of good stuff.
Yeah, it is, wow.
Um, I just had one question about, you were talking about the, um, a goal plan. You were saying, were you saying the students come?
On the tough topics? No, the teachers.
Okay, so.
Are you talking about when I was talking?
You said they come in, in the, they'll come in the morning and.
We, we were invited, um, just to expand on the P.D. It was a P.D. opportunity, kind of spearheaded by Steph Reinhorn and, as well as some teachers over at Algonquin.
Okay, so it was teacher, okay.
And so, they worked, yes, they worked collaboratively.
Teacher, I was like, why?
So, they're, so Dr. Reinhorn worked with the High School History Department.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and they are putting together a series of professional learning workshops, not only for educators but for us administrators. Um, and it's really dealing with um some, it's called tough topics. Um, but it's really talking about um race, identity, and really raising our understanding of, of how we can be better leaders and how we can be better educators in the classroom.
Greg, do the teachers then have like the opportunity on one of the tough subjects, that they could contact that staff member from Algonquin? Because I mean, I'm taking like if you have a paid speaker come in and they'll give you a contact and it's an email, but you go like, ah, it's too much. But, you know, if you have a colleague that you, can they reach out if they have questions after the P.D.?
I've already had somebody do it. So, Brittany Burns did the, did the training at Algonquin. My fifth grade teacher went to it and had all kinds of questions and they've been emailing since, like, which I think is a huge benefit to our staff, that we have these experts within our district that are willing to help support everybody, so it's been great.
I mean, that's wonderful because some, as I said, I'll repeat, you go to some, you know, we have paid speakers come in and great ideas and then they go and you have follow-up questions, but no one there to answer it. So, this is, this is great. Thank you, John. I really appreciate that. Congratulations, Greg. That was a good job. I like collaboration. Oh, Kristen! Hi, Kristen, do you have any questions?
No. Um, a little bit more of a statement, I think, I, you know, I think you covered pretty much everything I had written down in questions, um, and I, I wanted to also add, I agree with everyone else, it's a great amount of collaboration uh seen between the four elementary schools, it was wonderful. Um, I did one, one of the action steps had community forums, uh, Calhoun Cafe, I think is what Jen called it a couple of weeks ago, that my family were able to attend and some other parents, and they even had childcare. And so, that was an excellent example of one of those action steps. Um, it went great. We actually pulled in the driveway and my kids, where the younger two who were with us, said, when do we do that again? They doing that tomorrow? I'm not going back tomorrow. They really loved um having in the art room with the students who were watching them and they had a great time. And we had a great time as adults too, connecting and talking about different topics in like sort of a semi-casual manner. I thought that was great. Um, and I'm sure the other elementary schools probably have similar things planned, so I think that was a great step to connect with the community, um, and just sort of hear out any concerns and also explain what goes on because sometimes there's sort of that divide. And as busy parents, we don't always have the time to read every letter that comes to me, but we try, I swear, try. Um, or mine does not be totally clear, you know, even if I'm reading that email or the letter, exactly what's going on in the classroom. That was a great connection that I really appreciated. Um, and I'm really looking forward to seeing, you know, the progress of all those action steps come next year too. Thank you for the whole report and um the care that you took creating all that.
Thank you. Thanks, Kristen. Sorry, forgot about you for a minute.
Could I say a few remarks? So, first of all, um, I just want to take a moment and acknowledge the role of a building principal. It's really exciting work, um, and very challenging. It's not a job, it's really a lifestyle. And I just, I want to acknowledge all of the hard work and dedication that these four individuals put forth every day, um, making sure that teachers are supported, students are getting what they need, um, and oftentimes, um, to their own, um, cost. Um, they don't always think about themselves and the cost of this position. So, I just want to acknowledge the hard work and effort and we're very fortunate to have four individuals who really set the tone in their buildings and lead by example. Um, and it often goes unrecognized when it's going well. Um, people don't tend to notice. When it doesn't go well, that's when you start to notice, so thank you. Um, and just a, a, a second comment is around kind of the, the work around aligning to the strategic plan, thinking about um our own goals, educator goals, and seeing this through line. But just also acknowledging that each school has a climate and culture that is unique and special, and we don't want to lose that. Um, so, as we have a lot of commonality in terms of what we're working toward, we're also encouraging each school to have its own um uniqueness, um, culture and climate that is special to that particular community. So, thank you. And well done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I'm just going to say it now because I always forget, you're welcome to leave at any time. You don't have to be released by me by any means, so feel free to leave whenever you need to. Because I get caught up and I forget. Like, can we release someone? Oh, I'm so sorry. All right, next on the agenda is the legislative update.
So, at this time, there are no new updates, but after.
Tomorrow, there might be?
After tomorrow, there probably will be a couple of updates in terms of some of the allied questions on the ballot for tomorrow.
All right, uh, school calendar. Um, you were going to present about a little update.
Sure, so I, I want to provide the um committee with an update on the calendar advisory working groups' progress. As you know, one of the important responsibilities you have as school committee members is to approve the upcoming academic calendar. The uh working group has been in existence for um three years. It's hard to believe, but it, it has been um working toward really thinking about what type of calendar best supports academic learning, but also supports um kind of the core values of the district, thinking about respect, equity, and inclusivity. Um, the topic for conversation will be part of the December fourth uh combined open meeting where the three committees, or the four committees will talk about the school calendar. What I wanted to do this evening is um share some of the work that the working group has completed um so that you are prepared for a deeper conversation on December fourth. The calendar advisory group did identify four calendars that are included in the packet that I provided. Um, the first calendar um does have additional um religious observances. Um, those religious observances are Diwali, Eid, Good Friday, Lunar New Year, Rosh Hashanah, and Yom Kippur as non-school days. Um, and it also, in your packet, includes the calendar for not only next year, but twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. What you'll see is advantages and disadvantages of each of the proposed calendars. Um, the second calendar is, uh, parallels the first with addition that the religious holidays are marked as half-days rather than full days, full days off. So, again, it's Diwali, Eid, Good Friday, Lunar New Year, Rosh Hashanah, and Yom Kippur are observed as half-days. Um, advantages and disadvantages are included. The third calendar um has Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur as non-school days, while Diwali, Eid, Good Friday, and Lunar New Year are half-days. And the last calendar is Calendar Four, um, which is Schools in Session um on Diwali, Eid, Good Friday, Lunar New Year, Rosh Hashanah, and Yom Kippur. So, uh, no um religious observances are non-school days. You'll see the calendar, uh, the working group did spend a lot of time thinking thoroughly, thoroughly through um each of the calendars, thinking about the advantages and disadvantages. I will state that there is no perfect calendar that meets everyone's needs. Um, but, you know, I think we've had some great conversations. Kelly is the Northboro School Committee Representative. Uh, we have educators, other school committee members. Kelly is the Northborough School Committee Representative. Uh, we have educators, other school committee members, representatives over on the region, and community members, in addition to central office members, um, thinking about this work. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the committee.
So the idea is too, is, um, you know, it's, it's a lot of information. So it might be something that you want to read over and process and go over. But to have kind of like a glimpse of it in the process, I think some, one thing that we kind of mentioned, um, at the combined meeting, you know, was like, well, where is our mind process and where is the thing's mind? So at least you have it. So then when the recommendation is put forward at the December meeting, um, you can kind of see why it, it's put forward, you know?
Questions? Um, are you planning on bringing each of these four calendars to the combined meeting?
So I know that there are, uh, three of the calendars are, are still being considered. I would say the third calendar that is presented may not make it to the, um, combined meeting as an option. I do plan on asking members, three, yep, the third calendar.
So the third one is the one that's, um, changes?
No, I just want to make sure, yeah, there's calendar one, calendar two, calendar three, calendar four.
And there's a calendar four. So the third option.
You're referring to calendar three as an unlikely candidate.
Might not be, yeah, once it's.
But you'll likely bring us.
Three calendars.
Yeah.
Um, the thinking is to have representatives from the calendar advisory working group present.
That'd be great.
Share the thought process, um, and share a, potentially a preferred calendar. The goal at the December fourth, uh, combined open meeting is not to vote a calendar, although it's the will of the committees to do so, but to then vote at the March, um, combined open meeting.
Um, as a follow-up, will we be getting, um, more data, like at the end of every calendar system?
So if you go on the live thing, like the thing, there's links to it.
So the, so you, I think, maybe I'm incorrect, Joan, but on, on each calendar, there's a row that talks about number of, uh, forty weeks, number of.
Yeah, we're gonna, this is gonna be filled in. We, we just had the meeting, what, like yesterday?
I was gonna, I was gonna ask the same thing.
Yeah, so these are still, it's a dynamic thing. So, yeah.
It isn't on the live link then?
So.
This part's not, but you can click the actual calendars. These, these things here.
Yeah.
You can click these and you can see the calendars.
So would that be the calendar that we always would get, it would be a block?
Yes, so, so you'll have a model calendar for each, each of the versions.
On the, on the links, to your point, it, it does not quite yet say how many five-day week, how many four-day week. You're, you're still calculating, you're still tabulating those.
Correct. By the end of the week, we hope to have that added to the document and we'll.
I mean, that's not always the affect of the hot, request of the holiday, I guess. It's just good to kind of contextualize that, like.
Yeah.
So it's, it's in the mix, but it's not the entire story.
Yeah. I mean, you could, if you clicked on the calendars and see, you could like.
Or I could just count through them. Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm just saying, but it's not.
But just, yeah, exactly.
So when all the data is filled in, will you be sending that before the combined meeting?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Are you, last one. Are you doing any follow-up as a survey for parents or for teachers?
Not at this time. Uh, teachers might be consulted, I think, or, um.
Yes, I think we are, um, asking the principals to share the calendar with faculty and staff.
Okay.
And any input feedback, um, will be taken into consideration. What we're very clear about is we're not asking, uh, for a vote. We're asking for advice, um, that the calendar advisory working group will take into consideration. In terms of communicating the, the four calendar options to the community, we will be sending out a communication saying, here are the four options that are being considered, or three, depending on where the calendar working group lands. If you want to send any feedback, you can send feedback.
Okay. And I know we always tried to, in the, in the past, take a vote at the December combined meeting, and like you said, but we're gonna do it at March.
December's just gonna be the.
It's just gonna be the break.
Winter break, February break, April break, start of school, end of school.
Okay, just the basic, okay. Is there anything, I'm just asking this question. I don't, I think I know the answer, but I'm still gonna ask it. Is there anything in any contracts that we have that says that this has to be done by a certain date?
So there's a policy. Um, I think the, the school calendar has to be voted by, I believe, May first.
May first. Okay, thank you. Kristen?
Then actually, my question was the same as, as Bryce's, about the four-day weeks, number of five-day weeks, that type of thing. So I vote by him, so.
Sorry, Kristen.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, but to just hammer that, to just finalize that, that point through the chair. Yeah, this is, we're gonna, this is a lot to digest in the moment.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily see a bunch of value on like trying to tease this out right now. So, but thank you, but also a big thank you for not just the options, but quickly going through your advantages, disadvantages, well-balanced approach. So thank you and thank the committee for that work. And, um, yeah, thank you. We'll review it.
I will pass that on to the working group.
Please.
And the working group has been going on since last year?
Uh, it's been three, three years.
Three years.
It's so long. It's been as long as I've been on the, as long as I've been on the committee, it's been.
It's important, but like, and I echo the same sentiment as Bryce's. Please thank them for their time and energy on that, because I think it's, it's very valuable. And you've had good listening ears to the community members throughout the years, so thank you. It's not an easy task, but that's one that we're trying to be inclusive and at the same time with the educational initiatives we have.
Yeah, and it, um, Superintendent, like, there is gonna be no perfect choice that's gonna satisfy a hundred percent of everybody.
True.
You'll notice some of the advantages is one person's advantage is another person's disadvantage. Do you know what I mean? Like, so, I mean, with every calendar, so it's very complex, you know, and we're just trying to make it, um, acceptable for the community at large. Okay.
Thank you, Kelly, for your time serving on that.
You're welcome. Lauren's on it, too.
Thanks, Lauren.
She's not here, but.
You can tell.
Uh, Northborough Extended Day Program.
So, um, yes, so this evening Keith LaVoy will, and will present the proposal for Northpro to take on a before and after-school care program. And I just want to acknowledge the Northpro Extended Day Program, over the years, has done some really nice work for our community. Um, we are very thankful for the efforts. I just want to point out that we will, um, would be going out for procurement, to procure before and after-school care this year. And that base, process basically sets criteria, um, and, and the lowest bidder typically gets the bid. So, one of the questions we had is, you know, does it make sense for public schools of Northborough to take on the before and after-school program as part of its core offerings to the community? So Keith will present that work this evening.
Thank you, Greg. So I do want to thank the committee for this opportunity. Uh, and if you recall, we did, uh, engage in a feasibility study at halfway through of last school year, to answer the exact question that Greg just posed, of whether or not it would be advantageous for the district, uh, to move forward and take on the operation of the Extended Day Program. I do want to thank, or I want to welcome, we do have some NEDP, uh, staff in the audience this evening. We have Kim Malora is the Director of NEDP. We also have Danielle Dexter. She's the Assistant Director, and Kelly McDonough is the Finance Manager. Also Oliver's here to make sure that I stay on target. We're well represented here, um, in, in the audience this evening. I also want to send a special thanks to Heather Richards and Becky Pellegrino. Uh, obviously, human resources and finances are a key part of whether or not we could, uh, take on the, the program. And, and our collaboration with the administrative team of NEDP and our central office staff has spent a lot of time diving into this and making sure we understand each other's operations for the benefit of the, the program, the communities, uh, the employees, as, as, as well as the community at large. So do want to thank them for their efforts. So the goal of the feasibility study is to answer whether or not it is advantageous for the public schools of Northborough to operate a before and after-school, uh, care program. Uh, tonight, I'm gonna also share the benefits of bringing such a program under the district's operation. Greg did mention one of, uh, we would no longer need to go out for procurement, which is a no small task. Then we're gonna be providing a recommendation for the school committee's considerations, uh, and then following that, talk about what next steps could, um, if it is supported, what, what could come next. So as you can imagine, there are a lot of advantages, and really, one key part of that, uh, in describing these advantages is the due diligence that has occurred over the last nine months to get us to this point. Uh, the advantages are, are bulleted here on the screen. Um, it include greater alignment to district goals, mission and vision. Also, many of the things that were mentioned during the school improvement plan updates today are things that could roll over into our Extended Day Program. Also, the programmatic access to district resources, including experts, uh, people and the facilities that we offer, were no longer tethered to a lease agreement or any type of agreement. If they needed something, we would be able to work together and, and, and provide it versus having to look back at some type of agreement. Also, greater access to the district's departments. Uh, this was on display during the feasibility study, but we'll expand, uh, once the operation comes under our control, which would include human resources and finances, which I already mentioned. It would also include technology, uh, our health, uh, department, student support services, teaching and learning, and operations, which is the part that I, um, oversee. Certainly, a greater alignment to district, uh, safety protocols and procedures are embedded in this. At this point, we do share a lot of that, but it would be with, into greater alignment that we'd be able to achieve, uh, once the program would be under our control. And the ability to maintain low fees for families. Obviously, before and after-school care isn't always an option for families, and we want to make sure we provide an option for them that makes it accessible and, and safe, especially when it's within our, our four buildings, which just adds to the, uh, availability for families. So if we no longer needed any type of lease agreement, we're able to pass that savings along on to families, which is always the goal of operating, uh, a program like this. And certainly, the preparation work that is being done right now is just a key sign of what, what lies ahead, not only during the transition process, but during operations. I can, I can say that it's been an absolute pleasure, uh, to collaborate with Kim and her staff around the, this conversation, around the feasibility, and making sure we cross every T and dot every I. Certainly, at the core of that is good conversations about the staff, what their needs are, and how this transition would be. There'd definitely be a transition and a conversion, uh, that would occur, but that's something we're gonna have a lot of transparency about and a lot of opportunity to, to share what those, um, changes would be. So we move on to what the school committee's role is. This, this slide is very dense, but I'll highlight it pretty quickly. Um, MGL Chapter seventy-one, Section twenty-six B, uh, does cite that the school committee has two main functions when it comes to before and after-school care. One is that it would, you know, with your support, uh, would, the district would be able to take on the operation of before and after-school care that is under your purview, and also to set the rates annually. So what fees would be assessed, families is also something that comes under the purview of the school committee, and would mirror what we do in, in Southborough for the extended, Southborough Extended Day Program, which we've operated now for, how many years back? Two? Can you ask?
This is our third school.
We're in our, we're in the middle of our third school year. Twenty, yeah, give or take. So this is the same type of, um, procedure that we, we did with, with Southborough a few years back. When we look at the recommended fees, one thing that we're gonna be able to keep constant and hold true and be part of our recommendation this evening would to keep the rates the same for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year we're currently in, would also be the same fee structure for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year, to really reflect that this is an opportunity to give the savings back, back to the families while still maintaining a self-sufficient operation.
So the prices are gonna stay the same?
Correct. That would be part of the recommendation. And at last, to get to, uh, the highlighted, so obviously you can see the advantages are, are very strong. Uh, the Pope Schools of Northborough recommends to operate a comprehensive before and after-school care program. If the Northborough School Committee supports the district's recommendation, the district will work closely with the Northborough Extended Day Program to ensure a seamless transition. The district will begin the transition immediately in preparation for the district's, uh, program to be in operation for the start of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, which will be in July one of two thousand twenty-five. It is FY twenty-six. Stand corrected. Thank you. So, that would be the recommendation, and then if, I am happy to answer any questions, uh, that you may have, and then we can talk about what the transition process would look like.
I have a question on the recommended fee slide. What are the timeframes, like the before-school program? What hours does that operate?
Kim?
Seven AM, the doors open, and we release them to the, uh, school bell at the start of their day. So anywhere, uh, average about an hour and a half in the morning.
Okay, can the parents drop them off anytime? Seven thirty, eight o'clock? They can do it? Okay. Follow-up? What about the after-school program? I see that that is close to twice the amount of money, because I'm sure there's more hours there.
Correct.
So what are the hours?
Excuse me, that's the release of the school day to six PM. And again, parents could come anytime from three to six to pick up their child.
Do you ever institute if a late fee for the parents?
Yes.
If they are past six o'clock? Let's say they're coming from Boston, there's an accident, they're stuck on four ninety-five. Do they have to pay extra?
Um, courtesy is a phone call. You know, if we don't get a phone call and they show up late, they, they will get a late fee. We do ask our parents to communicate to us. We understand traffic could be horrible. We understand things could happen. Um, I'll, I'll say that we've been very lenient on that. Um, we don't really have any parents that do come late. The ones that have arrived late do give us that courtesy phone call, so then our staff know that they need to stay till they're there.
Okay, so what would be, what would be a typical late fee if I'm late picking up my child fifteen minutes to a half hour?
So, Kelly, wanna count, calculate that? Ten minutes per, ten dollars for the.
Ten dollars for the.
First five, and then it's five minutes per dollar after.
Ten dollars for the first five minutes you're late.
Correct.
And then?
A dollar each minute after that.
Okay.
It gets expensive.
It is, yeah, it's more about like, you know, we, we know one-off may happen.
It's disincentivizing.
It's a regular occurrence. It may get a fee, parent may get a fee, yeah.
And it parallels what we do in Southborough, very similar.
Yep.
Okay.
It's very normal for our after-school care programs to have that established late fee.
Yeah.
That is best practice.
Well, I know, a lot of them do it, even per school, they do that. You have to, you know what I mean? You have a life, too, that you have to get to. Okay, thank you. Kelly, I didn't realize that the staff of the, were here. Could they introduce themselves? Would it be okay?
Sure.
Um, hi, I'm Kim Malora. I'm the Executive Director.
I'm Danielle Dexter. I'm the Assistant Director.
One more, Beth.
Hi, I'm Oliver. I'm a one-two-one-eight and a group leader.
What does the group leader do?
Um, so everyone under the site coordinator is a group leader. So we, we lead a specific group, uh, cohort of kids, uh, for attendance and safety purposes. So the proctor, I have second and third grade, so I'm always counting to make sure they're all there, um, except the days when I'm a, a one-two-one-eight for, uh, certain students, and then I'm just on that stage.
Okay.
Group leaders also run activity, like crafts or games and gym and things like that. So they do other, um, activities with the kids to build up relationships and have fun with them.
Okay. Thank you for introducing yourselves. I didn't know if you were here for audience sharing and no one asked a question like, okay. They just have a free night. You want to come and see us, so. Thank you very much. Thank you for your dedication. That helps the parents.
How awesome NEDP is.
Yeah. Um, I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot, so feel free to, you don't have the answer. But are you guys in support of this?
Yes, I, um, I'll speak for myself. Um, I don't want to speak for my team, but I do know my team's on board as well. Um, it, it, one, it makes sense. Um, two, we have been working behind the scenes for months, um, with Heather, with Keith. Um, it does not feel, um.
It's not a hostile takeover?
Not at all, not at all. I, um, it, I'm relieved. So I came into Northborough right after the SEDP thing had happened, so I'm not in Northborough myself. So I'm not in Northborough myself, so I've heard, you know, you hear things. So coming on board, I wanted to make sure and that this trans, this potential transition would be as smooth as possible. And I can assure you, I feel very comfortable with that because of the work with Keith and Heather. Open door communication, we got a question, they answer it, they have, they have one, we answer it. And we want to make this as smooth as possible. It, this does get voted in to help our staff as well during this transition. Yeah, but I'm completely on board with it. It, to me, it doesn't make sense, to put it out for bid. NEDP has been a part of this community for 20-plus years. It is a well-established program and has a fantastic reputation. That was one reason why I sought it out myself. This is something I've done for years and I'm very proud to be representing NEDP and hope we can continue to represent NEDP under the school district's support.
Thank you.
Just a couple logistical questions. So with the understanding that this is tuition-based and will operate as a self-sufficient cash flow entity under the banner of the school district?
That is accurate. Becky has modeled the financials. We also have the experience taking on SEDP and we also have that as kind of a proof of concept.
Okay. And confident that this will, this is, this is being proposed to be financed in a way that is attainable and sustainable?
Absolutely, yeah, we've run the numbers and like Greg said, we have the proof of concept in Southborough. And I do think that it's going to be a great partnership with NEDP.
This may not be a question you have off the top of your head or maybe an anecdotal response, but at, at what rate could participation drop and remain sustainable financially?
I do not have that off the top of my head, but I can definitely run those numbers.
Okay, I don't see that happening, but it is an interesting thing to know that, you know, given change and change does weird things sometimes that, you know. So I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure where the floor might be compared to where you are now. I don't, anecdotally, I wouldn't say you're near it, I'm just curious.
I mean, and one thing that I will say, and this is something that we've done in Southborough, is we really take a look at like the numbers, we look at the staff ratios. And I, I think that, you know, this group here would probably say that if the numbers were dropping, then we would have to look at the programming. We'd have to really look to see, you know, how we can attract new students to the program and then maybe make some hard choices i- if we were not seeing those numbers come to fruition.
Yeah.
But one thing we could comment on as far as like the experience in Southborough is the pandemic threw everything upside down, right?
Sure.
And many families did have either one or two of the parents, you know, working from home. And then that has been, you know, progressively changing over the last couple, couple of years. So I can speak for now, I don't know what the current, the absolute current enrollment is for, for Northbrook extended day, but I can say that Southborough has a small waitlist that's manageable, but still they are at capacity. Or are very close to, both for the morning program and the afternoon program.
Okay.
I would say two comments. First, I, you know, I think we've been very impressed with the leadership team at NEDP. They've, it sounds, they have a strong skill set, projections, booking out enrollment. Secondly, in Southborough, the Southborough School Committee has not raised fees in three years. We've maintained the cost point while still maintaining a profit. So I think that is a benefit, that the more affordable we can make the program to our families, the more competitive it is against options parents have. And therefore, it's typically a well-subscribed option for families.
Yeah, I'm a subscriber. Yeah, yeah. I guess maybe just to then comment if it's okay with the chair. So I think some feedback regarding potential enrollment in further days from the community really was mostly kind of focused on the idea that there's a sense that there could be a bigger bandwidth for more educational-related activities within the space versus time. That's not, nevermind, that's a, that's a poor way to say it. Versus non-strictly educational opportunities kind of currently, a lot of play now. And not as a forced mechanism for everyone, but similar to how you're doing your groupings and you're making different offerings, that there be, again, and you probably do something like this, but that we just might not know, but a more educationally-focused activity as well, whether, and whether that's science or math or whatever the subjects may be. That was just a little bit of feedback of like, well, you know, after three days, I think my kids have had, kind of had enough of the volume of potential activities. But also that like, I've only ever experienced Proctor's NEDP, but it's amazing. Like it's, it's the amount of like attention, attentiveness and care and just the right amount of structure. You know, like it's, it's fantastic. Yeah. Sorry, that's it for me.
Joan? Okay, not being familiar with it, I probably have more questions. How many schools are you in for after school care?
Four elementaries in Northborough.
Okay. What about if somebody in the middle school wanted it, can they walk over or no?
No.
No? Just elementary?
We're licensed currently through the Department of Early Education Care, so we are capped at 12 years of age. So that would be a no, at, at currently.
Okay. Are any of the schools filled to capacity right now?
Yes.
All four?
One is full at capacity and a waitlist on particular days. And we have, actually, there's two, two. Lincoln and Proctor are full. Z has some room and Heasley has some room.
Okay. When the parents sign up, do they sign up for the whole five days, for the whole year, or?
A high majority do use the five days. We are flexible, they can choose one or two, up to three, four, but majority of our parents do. We need it Monday through Friday.
Okay. And if the vote is successful to come under our jurisdiction, whose jurisdiction are you under right now? The town of Northborough?
We're a nonprofit.
We're a nonprofit, so we're, we are licensed through the Department of Early Education Care. That's our district, basically.
Okay, so you run this separately then?
Correct.
There are separate businesses that's operating in our schools.
So there, there is an NEDP board?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
That, that kind of oversees the program and the board is made up of Northborough parents.
Okay. But you do follow, you were saying, the Department of Education, so early childhood, you are?
Not Department of Education.
It is, it's the Massachusetts Department of Early Education.
Early education, okay.
You follow their regulations.
Their regulations and everything, okay.
Very, very strict regulations.
I can imagine, I think they are.
So Joan, one, one thing to consider is that i- if, if the committee so chooses to bring the before-after school NEDP under the district's control, it would then be under DESI regulations?
Oh.
Which do, does adjust, make some adjustments, places of flexibility and is currently how we operate the Southborough Extended Day Program.
So just from EEC to DESI?
Oh, okay. So is there advantages into being with DESI?
Yes.
Okay.
Advantage from an NEDP person is the regulations are not as, there's more flexibility to do a little bit more, but they, they still hold the accountability as safety in the program and health in the program, so.
I think Kim said that very well. And one thing to understand is that the Department of Elementary and Secondhand Edutimes, you know, is the governing for, for all of our schools. And then what they're able to do is take that governance and extend it to before and after school care. So the good thing is, it's not a separate set of standards or regulations that we've got to follow. We have enough of that to do. So what we do to operate our, our buildings and our programs within, within our school normally, this is just an extension of that. So one thing we would have to do is if, if it is the will of the committee, we would then reach out to DESI. We would, would fill out a relatively simple form and we would get approval to run a before and after school care program under our jurisdiction.
Okay, so if it comes under DESI, when DESI comes out and does like quad, I mean, not yearly review and they come to look at the programs and that, would they then also, would that encompass the after, the extended day?
Becky, do you know much about that?
So I think one of the ways to look at it is that by operating a before and after school program, if you think all of the, the policies and procedures and expectations we have, they would, it would, this team is part of our district now. It will follow those policies and procedures and expectations that we have. So it's not, it's not a shift?
Yeah.
It's just an addition and welcoming this team to our larger team. And again, working very closely with our finance departments, our HR department, our student support services department, our, our nursing and really using those resources to, to program's benefit.
They would become district employees?
They would be employees of the Public Schools of Northborough.
Oh, okay. That, thank you, that was my next question. All right. Thank you very much.
Just one other piece of the EEC DESI thing is that right now, we have certain regulations that like, let's say, they have Proctor, there's certain equipment that they can use during the school day, but we cannot use it because EEC says we, our kids can't use certain pieces of the playground. So now like, so.
Pieces of the playground?
Yeah, like certain, what might be more challenging.
Kids are like, well, I can use it during the day, but I can't use it now. It's like, well, yes, and.
Because the delta between DESI and EEC.
So it's like, those little nuances will be better, like easier across the board because everything will be the same. But like, those are, that's like the difference you might see, or the kids would notice more than anything.
Good example. It's a good example.
So if we take the vote in affirmative tonight, when would that go into action so the kids could use all parts of the playground?
July 1.
July 1st.
They can't do it. You can't, oh, it's July 1?
July 1, yeah.
I thought you were going to have a lot of happy smiles.
I know, I wish, right? How many times we have those conversations?
Wait until the children, they're like, I just don't understand, I can do it all day.
Well, EEC, they're like, you know.
Kristen?
Thank you, Kelly. I was just wondering if somebody, Becky or somebody near my microphone could repeat what was just said because I couldn't hear.
The whole thing or just?
Sure, sure, Kristen, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so one of the differences between the regulations of EEC and DESI, Danielle provided an example that there are certain playground apparatuses that EEC will not let our, our students use after school, but they are allowed to use it during the school day. So there's a little conflict, they go after school and they're like, why can't I use this? So that's just an example of the regulations that are different, that hit home, that affect the kids directly, which would no longer be something we would have to be concerned with.
Oh, okay, thanks. And the only other thing I would add is like Bryce mentioned about Proctor, my older two of these went to the Lincoln Street NEDP program for a while and it was wonderful. The people there were great and they always had a great time. So my experience with the program has always been that it's a great program. Thank you.
I think my only thought is with it is that, you know, how the morning is only like, you know, an hour and a half, roughly two hours, you know, so the prices for that. But the afternoon is more because it's up to, you know, 6:00 PM. But I feel bad for the families who only need it for like an hour, two hours, you know. So that's just food for thought in the future years to come, like, you know, could there be something for the smaller window? You know, it's tough because it's a body taking up space. It's kind of like my dog when I send him to half-day daycare versus full-day daycare. The price is only $3 difference because, you know, the body's taking up.
Kristen?
The staffing and the cost of all of it.
Yeah, so it's tough, but, you know.
Kristen?
Just to comment on that, Kelly, as a parent who only needed it till about 4:30 when they got out at 3:25, I just left them there.
You're paying for it, mine as well, right?
Other days, I got yelled at because I showed up at 5:45 and then they still wanted to play. So there's no way. But I, it was always nice that I had that anyway if I wanted to get something done or something. But I, I do get what you're saying too, if it was a possibility, you might be able to fill some of the gaps in. I think it was like Heasley and Cebreys still had some space for people who didn't need it the whole time and who weren't willing to leave their kids, but I just love my kids.
I love that. Thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion to vote on the recommendation to operate a comprehensive before and after school care program. Do I need to explicitly say by formerly NEDP or?
The, the only addition.
I don't have like a vote language here in front of me.
The only addition is just after recommended fees as well for the 25, 26 school year.
Okay, so I move to vote to recommend to operate a comprehensive before and after school care program with NEDP at the rates as described for the 2025, 26 school year.
Second? Motion by Bryce, seconded by Joan. Any discussion? It'll be a roll call vote. Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome to the district.
May we be excused?
You are, you are welcome to go.
It's been a long day.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Heather, thank you.
Those of you who don't include the, the vacation weeks and things like that, you know, there's other weeks, right?
That's right.
A lot of people know there's other weeks that have these attached to them. Yeah, that are, they get the shoot.
Yeah, that's a discipline.
Yes. Well, and some of your after, your after, your, your half-day programming, your early release programming, like yes.
This is the standard.
These are just the standard base.
Like 100 needed school days.
Correct, yes. Everything else are additional weeks and days. All right, again, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Thank you.
Thanks Oliver, nice meeting you.
Yeah.
Nice meeting you.
Good to see you all.
If a day is a day off, like for example, an electric day, maybe they choose to operate it. So then there would be additional fees.
You get the pull for it.
Yeah.
It makes some of the calendar stuff a little easier.
It would be if they, if they do allow that to, if they, if that works into something like, you know, half-day thing. All righty, we have some grants to approve. We have approval of donation of an electronic scoreboard to the Melikan Middle School from Northborough Basketball Youth Association. It's approximate value of $5,800 and the approval of donation period products to the Northborough Public Schools from free with approximate value of $1,500, $50. Do you have any?
They're very appreciative for both donations.
What is the, what is free?
No free, it's free period?
Yeah.
It's free and then a period.
Yeah.
Oh, free period. It was a ministry started at a church providing period products, free at church, to local communities and they just grown. Last year they received a $500,000 grant to free of, to provide period products.
Yeah. We weren't.
Now it makes all the sense in the world.
Now it all is coming together because we were just saying period, that we weren't processing which period it is.
So we actually did grant from NEF for the products.
Yes.
First year and then this year, our supply has been donated through free period.
That's great, that's amazing.
I'll move to the, the approval of the following grants and donations. Approval of donation of an electronic scoreboard to Melikan Middle School for Northborough Basketball with the approximate value of $5,800 and the approval of a donation of period products to the Northborough Public Schools from free period with the approximate value of $1,550.
Second?
Moved by Bryce, seconded by Joan. Discussion, I just want to say a great big thank you for the youth basketball that they, they do, you know, they pay rent and things, but they also help with our facilities, you know, throughout the year. You know, they do the flooring, usually they redo the floors and, you know, the scoreboard is, is a great thing. And the, the free period, I mean, I think that's great for all girls that need it, so. Kristen, do you have anything? If not, we'll do a roll call vote and you can start us off.
I'm going to go with a yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, it passes unanimously. Thank you so much for the grants and donations, we appreciate it. I'm going to text Mike right now. Old Business, MSB. Old business, MSBA update on the Peaslee Building Committee and the Z School.
Sure, so not too much to share in terms of updates for the Peaslee Building Committee. I will share that the building committee did complete all of the eligibility phase requirements. We should be hearing about a scheduled meeting sometime in December or early January to move into feasibility. There will be one additional meeting of the Peaslee Building Committee, which will be held at Peaslee to tour the Peaslee facility and get a sense of its current conditions. And then, secondly, the, we did hear from MSBA this past Wednesday that the town of Northborough is accepted into MSBA's accelerated repair program to replace the Z roof, which is great news. So now Keith and Becky will be working on kind of the steps and the timeline for that to occur. But both very good news, and thanks to Keith for submitting the application and helping move that project forward.
That's great.
And one, one of the determining, you know, factors that came through is that Z would be, with a roof replacement, would be solar-ready, just to move forward more of our sustainability efforts here in Northborough.
That's great.
Joan?
I had a question on the last paragraph on the first page. You talked about that the commencement date is January the 2nd. So does that mean when the work has to, the towns can, what does that mean?
So that's when the process begins.
Okay.
So there is a prescribed process, MSBA moves the town through to, from feasibility to construction. So our process actually begins January 2nd where we'll meet with the MSBA liaison. They'll talk about the steps we need to take, which includes securing funding for feasibility. So it begins on January 2nd.
And then it said that the town must approve funding for this within 90 calendar days of the commencement date. Does that mean a special town meeting?
That is funding for the feasibility.
We've already approved that.
We did that.
No, that is for the
Talking about the roof, or you're talking about?
They were at Peaslee.
Yeah.
No, the roof.
So the roof is, so the feasibility amount, we're working with MSBA to get a sense of what that cost would be.
Okay.
But we're thinking about $15,000 for this particular project, which is something that is an overburden in terms of getting the feasibility funding to go forward. And I believe we have 12 months to secure actual funding for the entire project through the town meeting process.
So what would be 90 day, within 90 days of?
So we have to secure the $15,000 for feasibility within 90 days.
Which, from, from
January 2nd, yeah.
From, which basically we have it, right, is what?
We have.
We have that in our
Okay.
We're able to come up with that.
I was trying to get the time period on that one.
And then town meeting would be voting for the roof project potentially?
The challenge is the 90, I think the 90 days we calculated, it does not fall within the town meeting date
Oh, yeah.
For the feasibility funding.
Yeah.
Our goal would be to secure the funding for the entire project at the spring town meeting for Northborough.
The spring?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, transportation update.
So Becky can update committee on the invitation?
The invitation. So last Monday, we did issue an invitation for bids for our transportation, school bus transportation for the upcoming fiscal year. It's actually a three-year contract with two one-year options if we choose to enact those. So far, we have sent out the bid packets to five different companies, and one architectural firm in Syracuse, New York, for some reason. So, so we are hopeful that we will receive some positive bids for the services. We have put in place a number of performance clauses in this contract, things that we did have in the existing contract. However, we've also beefed it up a little bit based on the advice of our attorney. And so I think that our bids will be coming due on Monday, November 25th, which is the Monday right before Thanksgiving. And at that point in time, we should have a better sense for what we will be looking at for transportation for next year. The one thing that I did want to point out, too, is that unlike our last contract this year, or with this contract, we've been told by the state that prevailing wage does apply to this contract, which is different than what we were told five years ago when we went out to bid. So that will mean that whoever is a successful bidder will need to comply with those prevailing wage rates that are set by the state. However, I don't think that they're far from what we're currently paying our bus drivers.
Okay. Unless there's any discussion or anything, we will move on to the superintendent's report to the committee for enrollments.
Sure, so you have the enrollment report as of October 15th, 2024 in your packet. And we added nine students since the last report. And typically, what we're finding in the month of October into November, we're seeing an increase of students, not only here in Northborough, but Southborough. And we think it's potentially because of lease timings and rental agreements ending at the end of October. So that's one thing we're keeping an eye on. And also in your packet is the NESDEC enrollment projections. So when we look for FY '26 enrollment projections for the district, it's 1573, K through 8, and then NESSEC's projections is 1581. So we're, NESSEC projections is the opposite, it's 1573. And our enrollment projections for next year is 1,581 students. When you look at the 10-year projections for enrollment, it's, it remains fairly steady. No significant increases or decreases in enrollment. And that does not take into account any potential future building projects that may be on the horizon. But at this point, I think we have a good projection for FY '26.
Okay.
And then also for the superintendent's report to the committee, we have FY '25 budget line item transfers, and the monthly general fund expenditure report, and grants update. Becky?
So in terms of the budget line item transfers, I did provide the committee with a memo. There are three line items, or three function codes, rather, that are now showing as over-expended. Two of them are fairly small over expenditures. The first is in the superintendent's line item, and that was due to some additional supplies and dues that were required. And then the second is with our tech, technology, infrastructure, maintenance, and support. And that was an additional district contractual service agreement that we had put in place. The last one I did want to just mention to the committee is for our transportation special education. I think I had mentioned previously that we are members of Assavitt Valley Collaborative, and this past spring, they had gone out for a new special education transportation contract. The contract was awarded. We actually have a new vendor for our inter-district special education services. And then we are continuing to use Vanpool for any transportation that is out of district, so going to a private, a student going to a private school. The contract has proved to be more expensive than originally predicted due to some new language that was included in that contract. We have been working closely with ABC. I know the Board of Directors has been meeting on this, and they are working on those, on the contract that is in place right now and hoping to renegotiate some of these rates. So what we've done is we have actually encumbered an additional $200,000. We don't think we're going to need that much, but we're being overly cautious right now and just making sure that we do have funds set aside just in case of a worst-case scenario. But again, we are just being certain that we do have money set aside since we have not seen any invoices yet for this current fiscal year while they continue to work out this agreement.
Where are you finding $200,000?
Can I ask, can I ask you a follow-up?
Yeah.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
$200,000 feels like a lot of money. What percentage is that of the total special education transportation budget? As, as, giving us an estimate of how far over, how far over could we go?
I can, I can let you know that. What I can tell you is the money that we are taking it from is actually from our out-of-district tuition. When we had planned our budget for this year, we had planned to use some of our circuit breaker for this year.
Yeah.
And we've actually, we were able to, at the end of last year, if you recall, do some pre-pays. And so we were in a better situation with that.
Okay.
And we had not actually touched our out-of-district tuition. I can tell you what the percentage is, if you can
Yeah, just like, you know, is that, is that 20% over, is it 10% over, is it, you know, it's, that feels like, and, and just for clarity, too, sorry, through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
New language, new language gets introduced to a contract. We are entering, we are entering into other explorations of contracts for not just transportation, but other things. And so I think we just want to be aware that this is also a part of this process, is people will adjust, add, remove language in order to increase a level of flexibility for them to cover their costs and increase their margins.
I, I can speak if you want, Greg.
Yeah, and I think what, what the ABC is looking at, it's an, it's an interpretation of the contract.
Sure, I, that's a lot, what language is for the money.
So it's a, it's an interpretation of the language, which, again, the member of communities are fighting.
Yeah.
And the reason why we've not received bills is because they're not going to be paying the bills until it's resolved.
It's resolved and cleared.
But they haven't even issued an initial invoice?
So we, if you want to talk about the invoices, so I guess my, I, I, one of the things I would, would communicate is that it's a 15, 15% to 20% increase over what we had budgeted.
Yeah.
Which is significant. Secondly, that we are being conservative. It is early in the fiscal year, and we do not want to get to the month of April, May, or June and see that we have this deficit and not have a mechanism available to pay the bills. So we're being very conservative, as Becky had indicated. And our position right now is we're holding to what we said the maximum amount of, of around would
Could or would be, yeah, okay, okay.
So we're, I think we're, we're just being conservative at this point.
Okay.
And the invoices that we've seen have been for the summer months, which, so those were very small. And this additional charge that was added to the invoices was not included in that. And I can, I can speak to that. Basically, they had added a charge where they could bill us for transportation from the driver's home to the school versus from where the hub is to the school, and then back to the driver's home. So we were paying basically for the commute of the van driver. And it was something that they added on to their bid document.
And it's an interpretation of distance from, a coverage of distance from A to B with the delineation being on the definition of what A should really be.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So they were, this particular contractor was the lowest bidder?
Mm-hmm.
And now it's not.
And potentially now it's not. And that is what Assavitt Valley Collaborative is pursuing, that indeed you weren't the lowest bidder. We awarded you the contract. So there's a lot of moving parts to this.
Okay. Thank you for making us aware of it.
Transportation.
The other
Kristen? Kristen?
Sorry to interrupt you. My question was just to clarify, if this does not come down, so the contract doesn't end up being the lowest bidder at one point, are you allowed out of it, or are we allowed to go back, or are we just sort of stuck anyway? Because presumably, if they were the lowest bidder, they wouldn't get the contracts in the first place.
So that's, Assavitt Valley Collaborative is working with legal counsel to look into exactly what is the mitigating factors that we can look at.
Okay, so that's one of the questions they're looking at is, you know, okay, that they're gonna charge us more than. Thank you.
And then the other three lines that I did point
Sorry, I'm just, like, I'm sorry, it's just like a fascinating thing. So, just, especially when it comes to transportation, right, we, we, some transportation companies have changed policies on allowing staff to then kind of not take ownership of their vehicles, but essentially manage their vehicles on a week-to-week basis, on a week-to-week basis. So an interesting note is, you know, further contracts explicitly saying that, like, it's the, the hub. Like, I don't want to incentivize you to just let your staff take their vehicle, your vehicles home.
Let's just say that that's in our bus contract, that it says that that's not allowed.
It's the hub, right, like, and, and so
That was, I, I, I remember reading that, and the thing is that
Because I can imagine as the business owner, like, if they are taking the asset, I want to cover the expense of wherever the asset is moving. And whether it's 22 miles or 12 makes a big difference.
Yeah, I think the other thing is, too, that we really noticed is, in this bid, we made sure that they're only giving us, like, a certain rate. Like, this other bid document had the ability for them to say other charges and to plug in those other charges, but they weren't specified. So there was no way of us to know what those costs would be.
Well, good luck to ABC.
Yeah, we're wondering if some of the drivers are commuting from upstate New York.
Yeah, there could be, yeah, based on what you're seeing for, yeah, yeah, reimbursables, yeah.
Yeah. A neighboring district, I think, was billed for 12 hours, so.
Of a, of a, oh, yeah, that's, that's ludicrous. Okay, sorry.
The last three things you said is just
The last, the last three things that, where there are overages are due to timing issues. And I won't report these on a monthly basis, but I thought since it's the first time that we're really talking about it, I just wanted to explain what was happening. And those three are the substitute short-term, substitutes for professional development, and then substitutes for health services, our sub nurses. We, at the beginning of each year, our financial coordinator encumbers the full amount that we've, we've budgeted for all of our substitute lines. And then as she finishes her payroll, she will then take down that encumbrance based on what has just recently been expended through the payroll, that pay period. This report was run in the middle of her processing, so she had not finalized her numbers so that she could then go in and take, bring those numbers down. So once she does finalize her payroll, she did bring those numbers down, and so now those balances are at zero. But I just wanted to highlight it since it does show as, as an overage, but it's due to a timing issue. And then in terms of the monthly general fund report, you can see that our, we are still healthy as of October 31st. We do have a balance of $868,444 or 2.98%. Last year, we were at $529,722 or 1.89. So we've really, I think, done a great job at encumbering all of our anticipated expenses, and I think that the Northborough budget is in a good place as of right now.
Great. So I will entertain a vote for the budget line item transfers and the monthly general fund expenditure report.
So moved?
To approve until audited. To approve? Do you want me to read?
Until Until audited.
No?
I think she said that.
Yes, okay.
She said until audited.
Yeah, until audited, so, yes. So moved by Bryce?
Second.
Seconded by Joan. Any discussion? Right, roll call vote. Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. It passes unanimously. Grants update?
Okay, so also enclosed in your packet is a full list of the grants that Northborough has received from DUCY in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Some of these grants have already been approved by the committee, but we wanted to provide you with a complete list as it stands today. I also wanted to note that we did see a decrease in the amount of federal entitlement grants that we received in FY twenty-five compared to FY twenty-four. The entitlement grants include Title One, Two A, Three, Four, as well as the IDEA special education and the early childhood special education grants. In FY twenty-four, those six grants totaled six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. And in FY twenty-five, we received six hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars for a difference of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. Not to the good. The biggest decrease was in our IDEA special education grant, which received sixty-one thousand dollars less than last year. However, I will say that we have seen an increase though in the number of other grants that have been made available, and I do have to thank Stephanie Reinhorn because she has done so much work when it comes to applying for many of these grants. And I would ask the committee to vote to accept the grants that were provided in the packet.
Did we know that the entitlement grants were going to reduce that much or not?
We did when they initially came out with the numbers when we applied for them, but we did not know prior to that. We, we don't know the numbers, I would say, until July.
There's a lot of conversation around federal funding for education and the grants that we receive. So we were anticipating a decrease in amounts that we've, we've seen in prior years. So that is something that we'll need to watch very closely.
Yeah.
Um, as we look at that FY twenty-six budget.
Joan?
So you, Becky, you asked if we'd take a vote on this?
Yep.
Okay.
To approve.
Do you want it also with the total amount that is listed here of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, you mentioned it, or just the grants?
I think just the grants.
Okay. Um, I move that we accept the FY twenty-five Northborough grant funding as presented tonight.
Second.
Moved by Joan, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? Hearing none. Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, draft of capital plan.
So I'll turn it over to Keith for the capital plan draft and maintenance plan.
Thank you, Greg. So enclosed in your packet was a draft copy. I do want to thank Kristen and Joan for participating in a subcommittee meeting with me a couple of weeks back to review the plan and, and got some great advice on that and on, on how to get things organized. So one thing that I, I would comment on is that since our meeting, Joan, we did make one additional entry. That was for in the all schools category, and Kristen, for you as well, adding technology and infrastructure and equipment as a five-year, a five-year plan going out. This is really to support some of the innovative things we're trying to do across the schools and getting some, um, just cohesion between the experiences that kids are having in a classroom, not to mention that some of the other infrastructure, things that are needed like servers and, and things of that, that meant to make things working well. This was a collaboration with John Parent, our director of IT, and Kathy Carmignoni, our, our director of instructional technology. They've been doing a lot of work, a lot of evaluating of kind of what we have, and, and this was the plan they kind of put together, and it would meet the threshold of a capital investment. So that's why we wanted to include it, and, but it wasn't quite ready yet in time for our meeting, Joan. So Joan, Chris, and I do apologize for that not being included.
Thank you. Would that include like Chromebooks type things?
No, it would, that would be more, this would be more like, you know, projection systems.
TV.
Audio type things, document cameras, things of that nature that would really be part of the classroom experience. And also what supports that classroom experience? It's not just what you see, but it's what's behind the scenes, the servers that are making things work, as well as the access point for wifi and things of that nature. A couple of things that we did for this plan, we did readjust the organization of it. We wanted to capture what was approved, and we did get the support of the town through some FY twenty-one, FY twenty-five projects. So those are ones that we're not proposing going forward, those are ones that we're currently working on. So if you were to scroll down on that gray column, you would see that, and we already talked about this, the feasibility study for the Peaslee School, as well as some of the work that we're trying to do at the Melican Middle School. Both of those projects are ongoing. We have attempted a couple of procurements to, to get that completed. Haven't been successful yet, but we are connecting with, and actually a local engineer to see if we can put something together about the pneumatic controls work at Melican Middle School. So the two projects that have been approved that we are continuing to work on are the domestic hot water upgrades at Melican, as well as the pneumatic control upgrades. So we do appreciate the town's support to, to get those done. The other thing that we're currently in the middle of working on, and, and I did take it off of the plan because we are actually in the middle, and before you know it, hopefully it'll be done, is the air conditioning project at Melican Middle School. We did successfully contract with an electrical contractor that's going to come in to expand some of the electrical needs to add air conditioning to Melican Middle School, and now we are out for procurement for the actual install, so the prefabrication of the windows and the actual installation of the window units that will take place. And we're going to try to get as much done with the budget amount that we have. I'm confident we're going to get the entire third floor done and as many rooms as poss, exterior rooms as possible on the second floor with our budget, what, what it would allow. So we did have a successful site visit last week, and I know we are going to have one, hopefully very competitive bid to, to get that work done. So we are excited about that.
And what's the date that we have to, don't we have to spend it by, because it's ARPA funds, don't we have to have it spent by a certain date, or is this considered spent type? Do you know what I mean, like?
I think they have to be under contract, is that right? It's, we have to be under contract.
They have to be under contract by the end of the year.
Yeah.
And we, the bid is due on Friday. So the hope is, I know the electrician is going to start working, and so the hope is that we can get this done over the next few months.
The electrician is actually starting tomorrow with the building being empty of students. Granted, there's voting, it's not going to interfere with that. But they're going to go in and do the evaluation and the certain runs they've got to make. So we are taking advantage of as much time as possible. And with the site visit last week, we were confident that this contractor would do a majority of the work during the second shift. So it'll be after school, two-thirty, they would come in. Still would be quarried, sorry, and everything like that, but we would, we would be able to get that worked on with limited interruption. And hopefully we'll be successful with the other two projects after that, so we are moving forward. So when we look to FY twenty-six, we did want to take a minute to prioritize some of the things that we would like to do. So the color coding. The rose colored are the projects that we are proposing as a priority for FY twenty-six. So if you go all the way to the top. We do have some repair work that we have to do to the playgrounds at Proctor Z and Lincoln Street. This was after a recent report that was done this summer. We're still reviewing that report. We got it a few weeks back, but we do estimate some repairs that will need to get done in the range of about sixty thousand dollars, about twenty thousand dollars per school. The camera upgrade at Lincoln Street School, we did do a, a, a minimum upgrade here at, at Lincoln to get us kind of aligned with the other buildings. So the expansion of that is something we're currently exploring, and that's why it's to be det, to be determined. If we go down to the Proctor School, the lower lot has, uh, paving down there is not, as well as the staircases and the retention walls do need a replacement. They've seen better days. This did stem from some of the gutter work that we needed to do a few years back to really get that flow properly. So what I can say, and Bud Richardson said would, would also support this, is that we haven't seen a rapid degradation of those staircases since we've improved the drainage. So one did affect the other. And I would be remiss in saying that Bud did do a tremendous amount of work in preparation for this plan, and those are the types of projects that he dove into and really gets a good understanding of what, what we need to do. But certainly that those staircases at Proctor and the retention walls need, need, need to be replaced. Kind of combined with that, DUCY School also had some staircases that have degraded over the years. This is mostly because we salt them, and concrete doesn't do well when you put rock salt on top over time. So these are just standard degradations we see with concrete staircases. And to kind of get a better sense of what we're going to do, we have reached out to a local structural engineer to get a good idea of what the scope of that project would be in preparation, hopefully for getting some funding for that as well. And we go down to the, the Melican School, certainly have those two projects that we were continuing to work on. And then look at like an LED lighting upgrade there. We are partnering with some of our local energy conservation companies that we work with in the past to see if something like that's feasible. Whether that moves up to FY twenty-six is to be determined. And then kind of in combination, a lot of the items that have been on the report for the last couple of years just kind of got bumped out. We do want to thank the town for their support of the Melican Air Conditioning Project. We did the Peaslee encapsulation this past summer. That was it for this past summer, right? It was, it was the Peaslee encapsulation in, in the boiler room, as well as the Melican Air Conditioning Project, and then these two remaining projects of the domestic hot water and then pneumatic control repair, so. Oh, and the tennis courts. The town did support the restoration, the repair to the tennis courts at the, the Melican School, and that was a successful summer project as well. Joan, Kristen, do you have any other comments you'd like to make based on our meeting from before?
No, the other, the only thing that I brought up and I suggested, that at the regional meeting, when we were doing the subcommittee assignments, we talked about appointing a person who would be the chair? And so that if Keith had a question on this plan, he would have the person to contact and also would know that that person would be leading it off instead of, in the past, when we'd go to meetings like, okay, who wants to chair, who's taking minutes, and we'd waste about five minutes. So under my suggestion, I asked Kristen if she would be the chair of this committee. I think it's, it's great to, you know, learn the ins and outs and the basics of it. And so that if there's any questions that you have, or it, when we do these capital projects in the future, Kristen would be the one who'd be speaking onto it, out of the two of us. So if that's okay with you, Kelly is the chair?
Yeah, I think, and did we not do it, usually on our, I don't have the thing right now, one of the names is bold it?
Mm-hmm. I, I don't know, yeah.
Do you know what I mean? Like, we, we did that a few, and then.
Then this went, went by.
But I don't know if that was, oh, okay.
So I brought it up.
Because I know that we've done that.
We have done, but I think sometimes we, I don't know, may, we might have just lost, yeah, through the history, but I thought it would be a good point. And Kristen, you accepted to do that, correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Don't want to put you on the spot.
Kelly, I do believe you're right. There were, at least some of the names on some committees were bolded, but I don't have it right in front of me either.
Okay, yeah. That's what.
And it helps to facilitate the communication in between, so the administration knows who to get in contact with.
I think the three committees, policy, operational budget, and capital are important to have.
Okay.
A lead.
Mm-hmm. So if that's okay with, with you, Bryce, and Kelly, for the capital?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I think it's fine. I mean, for you to determine. I don't have the list. I was looking to see, sometimes I pull them out and I have them, thanks. So, yeah, we can just make a note to bold her name on that.
Okay.
On that.
Thanks, Kristen.
All right. Do we have any questions about the capital plan? We don't have to vote, or we just, or do we need to vote?
So today is November fourth, so December, the next meeting is early December.
Yeah, December fourth.
We can wait till the December meeting. And we, when we meet with the town of Northborough to talk about some of the capital plans, we can, we can give a direction of where we think we are headed.
So we can wait till December to vote on it, okay. Now, maintenance plan, this is where I want to talk about.
Yes, yes. So also enclosed in your packet, do want to thank Bud Richardson. He did spend time not only for the things that are on his list of things that we want to get accomplished in different buildings, but also for the principals. So this is a collaboration with Bud and the principals to, to really look at the full experience for students and how can we, you know, upgrade that and make sure that we're keeping up with, with the maintenance plans of this. This is different than capital. The items on this list are not things that would meet the capital threshold for the minimum requirement, but are, would be things that we would take care of, whether it be in our operational budget or, or some type of revolving account if, if it were to be, to be possible. So one of the things that came out of my conversation with Joan and Kristen is to come up with a way of prioritizing kind of per building of the things that we do, and I did some reorganization of that, and is reflected in the document that you guys have. Rose color being the top priority and then the yellow being more of a secondary priority. So I did go through, I did have further conversations with Bud. He did some follow-up with principals. And so the plan that is in front of you here does have a number of those items identified. And Kelly, to your point, you know, one of the things that has been a focus, and want to thank Principal Carb for it, is looking at the Melican Middle School and just have to improve the, the overall aesthetics of the building, what can be done there specifically, the things like painting, things like the lighting project that we were, were hoping to get accomplished are all going to help in that regard. And even as simple as switching out different plumbing fixtures might be an upgrade to, to the experience as well. So you'll see some of those items included on the plan.
I think, and it's something that we've talked about in our budget goals for years too, is that, you know, we want to maintain our buildings and, you know, the longevity of our, you know, being fiscally responsible. You know, if we let things go too long, then it's going to cost more to fix or repair. So, you know, it's, as, as hard as it is to somehow, sometimes come up with the money each year, I think it's important that we start doing that so that things don't go too far, you know? And we were talking about, somebody was saying, oh, you know, we were talking about the Peaslee, you know, building thing, like, oh, well, you could save that for Melican. Melican realistically is not going to be done for fifteen years, let's be, I mean, that would be like a shocker if it's going to be done in fifteen years, you know what I mean? We're talking twenty years that we need to maintain these buildings. So, you know, we, we want to make sure that it's a conducive environment for kids to learn and staff to want to be there and learn. And so I think it's important to do that. I think the majority of our buildings are on the right track, so I think.
And the maintenance plan is not something that needs to be voted on, just, just the capital plan for, for December. This is more to keep, this was in addition to something we haven't shared the detail with, with the committee before, but I, I think we felt through the conversations we have, it's important to kind of get those things prioritized and get them out to you and offer as, you know, opportunity for, you know, feedback or, you know, anything in addition you would identify.
I mean, I'd love to see us being able to, and that, when the budget presentation stuff comes into hand, it will be to see like, how can we absorb some of these? It's good to have these numbers. Joan?
I have a question on the Peaslee Elementary School, the tree removal. Uh, we have it there, you have it there for FY twenty-seven for five thousand. Is that something we can ask the town DPW to do?
No, just because the scale and scope of what that would be, it would be something beyond what they would be able to, to do for us or our own custodian capabilities. Those are large trees.
It's a mighty oak.
What's that?
It's a mighty oak.
It is a mighty, it is a mighty oak. We did do some uplimbing of it, and we did do some deliming of some dead branches, which helped, did help with the overall health of the tree. We didn't want to have to cut down trees unless, you know, it's absolutely necessary. But those two trees are very close to the building itself, and we want to make sure we're keeping ahead of it, so we don't have any further issues.
So if you face the building, the front door, are they to the left?
To the left.
Okay.
They're the two large trees just to the left of the main entrance.
I think the other conversation is what will happen to Peaslee if we move forward with a successful, you know, building project. Does it make sense to, if it's a safety issue, obviously it will need to be addressed.
Yeah.
But if it is not a safety issue, then during the construction, we would.
Put that into that.
Manage the trees at that time.
Well, that's the other thing, I was, I was, obviously card entry, the playground entrance, that's something that needs to be done, you know, and so the solar window shades, is that? And so the solar window shades, is that?
We did have started that project with the most exposed side of that building and it did help with the overall comfort of the spaces. So the idea would be to do another phase of that to go.
Because we are dealing with, they're going to be in this building for a few years until the renovation happens, so.
And that's why the decision was made to do a, you know, an upgraded shade there to make sure you are getting that type of protection in place for the classrooms.
Budget priorities.
So I did include the budget priorities from the last school committee conversation. I also included in, in the memo to the school committee, the principals' priorities. So I will share that in terms of principals' priorities for the FY twenty-six budget, it continues to be math interventionist, so having a math interventionist at each elementary school. So in the FY twenty-five budget, we added two, I believe. So this would be one adding an additional two. The second priority for the principals is adding additional counseling at the elementary level to support students and their needs. Not only students who have counseling on their IEP plans, but also students who could benefit from a guidance counselor at the elementary level. So that was a priority as well. When we look at technology, technology is also an important priority for principals. Making sure they have access to updated current technology for classroom use. And then I would say that. See anything else that stood out? Technology assets and infrastructure, I spoke about that. Expanding safety and security measures within school buildings. So thinking about camera card access, again, school safety was a high priority. And I think those were the main priorities that stood out in terms of what the principals recommended. What I plan on doing is taking the budget priorities, the draft, and highlighting the priorities that the principals identified for further discussion with the committee and to finalize the document after the seminar.
Perfect. Joan?
Greg, on the third bullet, when you talk about an elementary strength program, what grade levels are you thinking of when you just have elementary?
So currently in the FY twenty-five budget, we have fifty thousand dollars to begin that initiative. It's grades three, grades four, and grades five.
Three, four, five?
Yeah.
Okay. And then my second question is, Shirley Prey had sent us out a document and we all, we're told to rank these. Is that ranking going to come into play? Do we all, do everybody do it?
I think a few members were waiting for the principals' priorities before they completed the rankings. So I think we have most of the rankings from school-located members, but not all yet.
Okay.
And, and that will be, again, organized into a draft budget priorities.
Okay, cause I didn't know if we were going to get a document that showed what the rankings were, if that had any merit or not, but.
Do you want to know what I want, Joan?
What, what would you like, Kelly?
All of it. Kelly wants all of it.
All of it.
Priority number one, all of it.
Yeah. Maybe, no, I think there's two more bullets you'd like to add.
I want a fifty million dollar school budget next year.
Oh, no. She seconded it, that was a second.
I heard it, seconded by Kristen. Kristen?
Hey, thanks, Kelly. You did sort of piggyback on that. What I was thinking as I read this was, there was some discussion in the last meeting about moving budget priorities by year or trying, I know we're trying to rank them according to the form that I filled out, which would be helpful to see as well, like you mentioned. But it just feels like a lot, like the budget, when I look at that list of budget priorities, I'm looking at it, this doesn't feel like it gives a lot of direction. I don't know what you guys, maybe you guys feel like it does, but for me, I feel like I would love to have some discussion on prioritizing, even within each category, what are we really focusing on this year, what are the action steps? What do you really want to focus on next year, what are the action steps? And to break it down a little bit, because it, it feels to me a little bit ineffective to just have this long list of budget priorities, which like Kelly, I would love to just do all of it tomorrow. But that's obviously not, not the reality. Is that something that we as a committee should discuss more and sort of arrange the way that we want? Is that something that maybe would be in the December meeting or a subcommittee meeting? Is where, where would that conversation happen for us?
So I can go to.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, I agree. I, it's almost as if like the school, I just see it's kind of like the school improvement plan, you know? It's like, it's from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven. And I feel like that's kind of like where these budget priorities are. But this says fiscal year twenty twenty-six, so we really should just have this be twenty twenty-six. And we can make one that says twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-nine, but, you know?
So my recommendation is that I work through the chair and come up with a couple of iterations. And then once we have an iteration that we think is worth discussing further, have a.
Budget priority.
If we can have an operational budget subcommittee meeting or post an open meeting, special open meeting to discuss the priorities, so we can do that. I will share that we also have a five-year staffing plan that we developed last year that is part of this conversation. Knowing that we can't add all of the positions in one year, what is the five-year outlook? And where do the positions fall, so we can add that to it as well.
Yeah, I'm also hoping, I'm also hoping that maybe Kristen, you and I learned some stuff this week when we go to our fabulous conference.
Never know the tips we learn. Pick up on little things.
And then lastly, for the superintendent's report, is the FY twenty-six budget calendar. The new town administrator for Northborough began today, so today was her first day. So Becky and I plan on sitting down with their finance director and Stephanie Bacon and really talking about the next several months and the budget process and also to get a better outlook on the town's finances and projections.
We should extend an invitation for her to.
To join.
To join a meeting, you know? Good idea.
And that concludes the superintendent's report for the committee.
Oh, I'm too tired for the rest. Motion to adjourn, no, I'm just kidding. Kind of. Joan, would you like to kick off the school committee member reports?
I have, there haven't been any meetings, I don't know.
Okay, moving on then.
The only thing that I'd like to say is that I have talked to Greg and to Sean Bevan, the principal, for the Council of Aging to see if we can get passes for the seniors to attend different things. They've, in the past, they have attended the dress rehearsals. And, you know, that's during the day, that's when they can go. So rather than, I'm always putting the bug in their ear every time I hear that there's a musical or there's a play or something, or an orchestra fall concert, hey, can we get free tickets?
There's one at the high school.
Is there? So I was thinking for the Northborough residents and also for Southborough, if we could do a pass for the seniors that they could have. And maybe we limit it to a certain number, I don't know, or not. And that way you eliminate me bugging you. So that's, that's a positive right there. So that's just something I'd just like to throw out.
Yeah, the high school musical is the twenty-first, twenty-second, or twenty-second, twenty-third this month.
So we do plan on issuing universal passes.
Perfect.
For our seniors and we can work with the town of Southborough and the town of Northborough to provide those passes. So as events arrive, you know, seniors can attend them and Joan, you don't have to keep asking us for special tickets.
I have to find something else, I don't know what I'll have to do. No, because I remember, I mean, for the members here in Northborough, when the DULL men's group, D-U-L-L.
DULL, DULL.
Yeah. When they came and they just saw the Eagle project, Eagle Scott project that was done, it was a display of all the athletics and it was the yearbooks in it. They were like little kids again, they were like seniors in high school. There's my picture, look at it, because the yearbook was opened up. It was wonderful, it really was. And they're big supporters of our schools and they're the ones who come to all our town meetings. So I think it'd be a nice little thank you to them. Thank you. Bryce, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Kristen, do you have anything?
The joint policy subcommittee met again in October. We divided up into working groups, was about two members for each policy that we had chosen, which I think we reported on in September, in the September, which policies have been chosen to sort of be reviewed first. But so now we have working groups and we'll be working on each of those and then presenting them later in this year to the full committee. And Lauren was elected chair of that committee, so she would be telling you this, but since she's not here, I can, I bring it back to I'm in. But next time she'll be able to, to report on the policy subcommittee.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you. For me, you guys have heard about the calendar, so that's that update. NSPAC, they had their board meeting today with the, do you call it board meeting? What would you call it? The, what do they call it? The executive meeting?
Executive meeting.
Executive meeting. So some great things were discussed there for their open committee. They're having a parents' night out November seventh, so it's this Thursday night at seven PM at the Neighborhood Tavern. And they have a registration online, you can register for that. And November eighteenth, Understanding the IEP presented by FCSN. And they, Understanding Your Basic Rights for it, so that is, you can register on their webpage also. And then that's for November. And then, yeah. That's it. Oh, for the Melikan tomorrow, in case anyone didn't know, it is election day. There's, there's a vote happening? Yeah, yeah, there's an election going on. And so we are, Melikan is bringing back their bake sales at elections. When it used to be in all the elementary schools, the elementary kids would, you know, have a bake sale.
I already voted. Can I still go?
You can still go and support the community if you'd like.
Okay.
And you can get a sweet treat. There's three different shifts of the times. They're going to do from seven to nine, they'll do the lunch crowd, you know, eleven-thirty to one-thirty and then four-thirty to six-thirty.
Cool.
So there'll be some sweet treats, beverages.
And where are they going to hold that?
It's going to be outside in a tent that I'm going to put up.
Right after this meeting.
Right outside of me. A pop-up tent between the.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's good.
Between the pole thingies, outside the school.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah, and then there will also be some merchandise too. Some sixth grade parents, talented group of people. Some people made some T-shirts and sweatshirts and some glasses, so.
Does it have the Melikan logo on it?
No, it's actually Northborough branded.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll send you the link.
Okay. Do you ever sleep?
Not tonight, I'm not. All right, so education policy, none at this time. Policy development, none at this time. Personnel report.
So no significant changes as of November fourth. Again, a relatively small personnel report, more appointments than resignations, which is always good.
Communications, none at this time. Action on minutes. We have the special open meeting minutes of September twentieth, twenty twenty-four and the open meeting minutes of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Joan, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, those pass. Future agenda items, preliminary budget report, school safety updates. One thing that was supposed to go on this agenda that I forgot completely was the office hour. We were in a, we were in a.
I saw that, no, yeah, we gotta, we gotta get that on there.
So I totally forgot about that. So I, I'm putting it for the future agenda items so that we can finalize an office hour. Anything else, anybody?
We also talked about the facilities capital plan from FY twenty-six to twenty twenty, to twenty thirty-one and also with a vote.
Vote on the things, yep.
And maybe, how about an update from the MASCE conference?
I guess we could do that. Kristen?
One thing I was wondering, I'm not sure if this should just be a, a small bit or actual agenda item, was where field trips stand on the Keith grade schools for each of the grades. Who's complaining, what was going on, because I know some of them have shifted over the past couple of years. It'd be great, she's got a overview.
So you want to know, like, what field trips happen, like, at each school?
Yeah, like which grades are planning a field trip or what they are and which grades maybe haven't chosen one, but plan to do one and which grades are popping out if anyone this year, like, we're not planning anything.
Yep, maybe we can talk to the principals and that can be presented in their, their plan.
We can work with principals and develop a chart that we can include in the packet for discussion.
That'd be great, yes. Approval of bills and payrolls, we're doing good. Bryce beat me this month.
Did I actually?
You did. He did.
Watch out, folks.
Yeah, as soon as I hit click, it was like, your file's complete. I was like, oh, you beat me. So congratulations. All right, audience sharing? Yes, Kristen?
Hello. So Kristen Williams, student, thirty, Georgia Ave in Northborough. I just wanted to make the comment that there was a wellness day on Friday. It was a half-day and then wellness days are supposed to have tests to prepare for or homework. But I did get multiple reports from different students in multiple classes that there were, was homework assigned. Some of which was quickly amended and the teachers said, oh, never mind, it's due, you know, Wednesday and others that were not. So I just wanted to bring that up, that I think there's a little more work to be done, although there's certainly progress being made, but there's maybe a little more work to be done. Make sure everybody's clear on what's expected on a wellness day and what should and should not be done as far as assignments and tests and things like that, particularly the middle school and high school level. That's obviously where you run into the higher workload. So I don't know how widespread it was, but just in my own conversations and experience, there were multiple times that there was, seemed to be some confusion on what was the expectation of a wellness day. Just want to bring that up. But also that I think it was a great, overall a great experience that the kids, at least that I interact with, really appreciated having a break. Hopefully some of the faculty got a break too and stuff just for their, their own mental well-being. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, no other audience sharing. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bryce, seconded by Joan. Roll call, vote. Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, we are adjourned at nine twenty PM.